Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Dan Garodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's public meeting of January eighth, 2025, and a Happy New Year to you all. We will kick off today's meeting with a series of votes before getting into our public hearings. First up is an authorization to facilitate the development of seven new three-story, single-family residences at thirty-one eleven Henry Hudson Parkway in Spite and Dival in the Bronx. From there, we will vote on a new mixed-use building at one-twenty-three Sutcliffe Boulevard in South Jamaica, Queens, with a hundred twenty-five homes, around thirty of them affordable, and a house of worship. The building would be near the Q six and Q seven buses and Basely Pond Park. Staying in Queens, we'll vote on one-twenty-two oh three Fourteenth Avenue in Whitestone. This proposed building would be close to the Q twenty B and Q sixty-five bus stops and College Point Park. It would include over a hundred homes, around thirty of them permanently income-restricted, as well as ground-floor retail. On Staten Island, we'll vote on authorizations for three projects. One facilitates a rear yard patio and pool at one-oh-five Anfield Court in Tote Hill. The second allows the construction of three new homes at three-eighty-six Nugent Street in Lighthouse Hill, and the third is for two accessory parking spaces for existing single-family residents on Signal Hill Road in Grimes Hill. Everything has a hill involved in those particular applications. Switching over to our public hearings, we'll start with testimony on a proposal by the Department of Small Business Services to establish the East Harlem one-hundred-twenty-fifth Street Business Improvement District. The district boundaries would be roughly between Second and Fifth Avenues and East one-hundred-twenty-fourth to one-hundred-twenty-seventh Streets, with a couple of blocks going up to one-hundred-twenty-eighth. Heading to High Bridge, the Bronx, the public is welcome to testify on a proposal by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development for a one-hundred percent income-restricted affordable building with sixty homes. It includes set-asides for low-income seniors and formerly homeless individuals and families, and is located at ten-ninety-three, ten-ninety-five Jerome Avenue, near Reverend T. Wendell Foster Park, and the four train at one-hundred-sixty-seventh Street. Next up, in Brownsville, Brooklyn, we'll hold a public hearing on another project by HPD, known as the Brownsville Neighborhood Construction Program, NCP. These three one-hundred percent income-restricted affordable buildings would bring sixty homes to four-twenty-five Mother Gaston Boulevard, five-forty-six Thomas Boylan Street, and seventeen-thirty-three St. Mark's Avenue. The first of those three buildings would also include ground-floor retail. The sites are all within the vicinity of subway or Long Island Railroad stations and a branch of the Brooklyn Public Library. The public is also invited to testify on another Brooklyn proposal, this one from the New York Community Hospital of Brooklyn in East Midwood. The hospital is requesting a de-mapping of a small portion of Avenue O between Bedford Avenue and Kings Highway to develop an infectious disease isolation unit, adding around fifteen-hundred square feet of community facility space to the existing hospital building. The final public hearing is on Queens Future, a three-point-seven million-square-foot development with a gaming facility, music hall, convention, and meeting space, twenty-three-hundred-room hotel, restaurant, retail space, and around twenty acres of, bless you, new redeveloped public park space. This proposal requires several zoning actions, including the de-mapping of around twenty-five acres of space that is technically mapped as parkland but is actually used as an asphalt parking lot in Flushing Meadows Corona Park. The commission's role here is focused specifically on the land use actions for this development. Queens Future itself would also need to go through the state-defined gaming facility licensing process. This involves approval by a six-person community advisory committee, which has representation by the mayor, borough president, local council member, state-elected officials, among others. So with that, you have a sense of our agenda today? Let's get right to it. Madam Secretary, floor is yours.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in-person in the CPC Hearing Room, one-twenty Broadway, Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, January eighth, 2025. I will now call the roll. Chair Garodnik?
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Commissioner.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Here.
Commissioner Crowe?
Commissioner Dweck?
Here.
Commissioner Gold?
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Here.
Commissioner Kramani?
Here.
Commissioner Mann, absent. Commissioner Marine?
Here.
Commissioner Osorio?
Here.
Commissioner Rampachat?
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of minutes of the special public meeting of Monday, December sixteenth, 2024.
Great, so I'm gonna make that motion to approve the minutes of December sixteenth. Thank you, Commissioner Rampachat, for the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, minutes are approved.
Scheduling. Calendar numbers one and two are laid over, and the next part of the calendar is the Reports section on page five. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number three, three-one-one-one, Henry Hudson Parkway, Snad Botanic Modification, CD eight, N two-five-zero-zero-two-six, VAX, in the matter of an application for the grant of a zoning authorization concerning three-one-one-one, Henry Hudson Parkway, Snad Botanic Modification, for the adoption of calendar number three. Chair Garodnik?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yeah.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowe?
Not yet.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat?
Yes.
Calendar number three has been adopted. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers four and five, one-two-three dash one-two, Sutcliffe Boulevard rezoning. CD twelve, calendar number four, C two-four-zero-one-eight-six, ZMQ, calendar number five, N two-four-zero-one-eight-seven, ZRQ, in the matter of applications for a zoning map and zoning text amendment concerning one-two-three dash one-two, Sutcliffe Boulevard rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers four and five, Chair Garodnik?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Outstanding.
Commissioner Kramani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat?
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers four and five. Borough of Queens, calendar numbers six and seven, one-two-two dash zero-three, Fourteenth Avenue rezoning, CD seven, calendar number six, C two-four-zero-three-one-one, ZMQ, calendar number seven, N two-four-zero-three-one-two, ZRQ, in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning one-two-two dash zero-three, Fourteenth Avenue rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar numbers four and five, Chair Garodnik?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowe?
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Yes, and I'd like to change my prior vote on four and five to yes. I just had to get my bearings.
Thank you. Commissioner Kramani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat?
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers six and seven. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number eight, one-zero-five Anfield Court, CD two, N two-four-zero-three-six-seven, ZAR, in the matter of an application for the grant of a zoning authorization concerning one-zero-five Anfield Court, for the adoption of calendar number eight. Chair Garodnik?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat?
Yes.
Calendar number eight has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers nine, ten, and eleven, three-eight-six Nugent Street, CD two, calendar number nine, N two-four-zero-one-five-four, ZAR, calendar number ten, N two-four-zero-one-five-five, ZAR, calendar number eleven, N two-four-zero-one-five-six, ZAR, in the matter of applications for the grant of zoning authorization concerning three-eight-six Nugent Street, for the adoption of calendar numbers nine, ten, and eleven. Chair Garodnik?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat?
Yes.
Calendar numbers nine, ten, and eleven have been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number twelve, Signal Hill Road, tentative lot one-ten, CD one, N two-five-zero-zero-zero-one, ZAR, in the matter of an application for the grant of a zoning, excuse me, in the matter of an application for the grant of a zoning authorization concerning Signal Hill Road, tentative lot one-ten, for the adoption of calendar number twelve. Chair Garodnik?
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Aye.
Commissioner Cerulo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Commissioner Kramani? Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat?
Yes.
Calendar number twelve has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page eight.
Terrific, thank you very much. And with that, we're going to get started with calendar thirteen, and I'll just ask everybody who is here to join us today to limit your comments to three minutes, and we'll look forward to hearing from all of you. Make sure you've signed up if you have not already. Madam Secretary, let's get into that first item.
Thank you, Chair. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number thirteen, East Harlem one-twenty-fifth Street bid, CD eight, N two-five-zero-one-one-four, BDM, public hearing in the matter of an application for a business improvement district concerning East Harlem one-twenty-fifth Street bid.
Great, I'm gonna start off with Calvin Brown of SBS. Welcome him to the podium, and we'll get right into it. Mr. Brown, good to see you, welcome back.
Good morning, Chair Garodnik, Commissioners, Happy New Year. I'm Calvin T. Brown, the Deputy Commissioner for Neighborhood Development at the Department of Small Business Services, and I'm joined with members of my bid team, and we're here to testify in support of the proposed East one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth Street Business Improvement District. At the Department of Small Business Services, we work hard to open up the doors for New Yorkers across the five boroughs, and we do this in three ways. One of them is creating stronger businesses, helping to connect New Yorkers to good jobs, and to work with our community partners to build thriving neighborhoods. We believe that the vitality to our city's commercial corridors, this is a key component of achieving that goal, and bids have been a valuable and proven partner in supporting our small businesses, helping with neighborhood utilization, and economic development across the five boroughs. In addition to our role of supporting and providing guidance to the business improvement districts, we have seventy-six now, SBS also supervises the bid formation and expansion process, serving as an advisor and resource for communities interested in developing or expanding bids. We are careful to ensure that each neighborhood steering committee we work with address, adhere some of our planning principles and policies, solicit robust community input, and perform extensive outreach to collect and demonstrate broad-based support across stakeholders groups. Moreover, we are cognizant of the unique nature of each community we assist and aim to empower local community stakeholders to make determinations about the proposed services, the boundaries, assessment formulas, which include the variables and budgets, that best suits their commercial district needs and appetite to pay the assessment that goes into operating these bids. While we always impart strong planning principles and share our data and best practices across the bid network, when working with any bid formation or expansion, we recognize that the power and effectiveness of bids rests in their unmatched understanding of their unique local needs and issues. SBS has been providing neighborhood corridor support to East Harlem for the past nine years, starting with the Commercial District Needs Assessment that was started in two thousand and sixteen as part of our Neighborhood Three-Sixty Grand Program. The East Harlem one-hundred-and-twenty-first Street Bid Formation Effort originated as a result of the initial work and was spearheaded by a stand committee of community stakeholders, which included seventy property owners, I'm sorry, seven property owners, three commercial tenants, and two residents. The committee held numerous meetings.
Mr. Brown, it's okay, you're out of time, but I was gonna have, my first question was, tell us about the process that led to this, so why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I'm about to wrap up. The committee held numerous meetings, consultations with local stakeholders throughout the planning and outreach phase. After an extensive outreach effort by the stand committee, SBS determined that the documented support among stakeholders, which is seventy-four percent of the area's total assessed value, including fifty percent of the total properties, and thirty-four percent of the commercial tenants or merchants within the district signing in favor, was more sufficient to submit the application to city planning. The proposed East Harlem one-hundred-and-twenty-first Street Bid would be the twenty-seventh bid in Manhattan and has met SBS's prerequisites for bid formation, and we believe that the bid will improve the conditions in East Harlem community. We have members of the steering committee here, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have now.
Great, thank you very much. Let me just start with one. Obviously, this has gone through a process, it's met SBS's criteria for bid formation. It's obviously not the first round of bids, as you noted, there are seventy-six of them and twenty-seven of them right in Manhattan. Just talk to us for a minute about the boundaries specifically from Second to Fifth Avenue and one-hundred-twenty-fourth to one-hundred-twenty-seventh Street with a little bit up to one-twenty-eight. How was that reached and why does SBS feel like that is the right outcome here?
So as I stated, up into the legislative phase of the process is a community-driven process, so that's the planning stage and the outreach phase, which is community-driven. Many of the bids do hire consultants to kind of help them with some of the technical issues, but in that first planning phase, they think about the boundaries, they think about what the needs are, which is based off of a survey that we require them to do so that they can assess what are the needs that we're trying to solve for. So based off of those needs, based on what the appetite for any property owner willing to pay into it, they come up with the budget, and they come up with the boundaries and the type of services that they would have done. They provide that to us, and we provide comments to it. We don't make any strong suggestions. If we think that the boundaries may be too big, we ask them to evaluate that, you know, just given what they are proposing as a budget. If it abuts up in next another bid, we ask them to, you know, consult with that bid to see if there's any appetite for an expansion. So we give them guidance along the way as they are thinking about those key things, like what are our boundaries, what are our budgets, what are we trying to plan for, and then what formula would we use to sort of assess the property owners who will be paying into the bid?
Right, thank you. And one of those, you know, was the possibility of abutting another business improvement district. In this situation, it would, in fact, abut another business improvement district on the West side. Tell us a little bit about what you expect the interaction would be between the existing bids to the West and a new bid right here on the East.
So with any bid formation effort, these are not efforts that are started overnight. These are like going years of planning, right? And when the idea of a east-side bid came into fruition, there was some sort of conversation with the one-hundred-and-twenty-first Street Bid, the ED at that time, and they did some sort of assessment of what an expansion would look like. They did that work, however, at the time when SBS started to get involved, there wasn't a political appetite from the then-council member, and then there wasn't resources that was dedicated to kind of allow that bid to do the expansion. And there were certain unique needs. I mean, we think of Harlem as just one place, but there's certain dynamics that are different when you cross Fifth Avenue, and during that time, East Harlem had a lot of challenges. And we felt like SBS could provide support through our grant program so that we can start the groundwork for building up towards a business improvement district by working with the local groups there and understanding what those challenges were.
Okay, last question from me before I go to colleagues if there are questions. The needs that were most immediately cited by the group surveyed, give us a sense of what that most looked like.
As we all know, sanitation is a big need, right? So sanitation is a big need for a lot of our business improvement districts, but that's not the only need. One of them is, how do we promote this district? How do we bring retailers back here? How do we make this a place for consumers and residents to want to shop here? So part of that is district marketing, event planning, so those are the things, they wanted to make sure that people knew about the events that were happening in East Harlem that will, you know, have a spillover effect for those businesses that were there. So part of those needs was just promoting the district, sanitation needs, and of course, addressing some of the quality-of-life issues that were present.
Okay, thank you very much. Let me go to Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown, I don't know if you were privy to the discussion we had during the review session on Monday about the budget. It's in slide five of the presentation that we had yesterday, in which, and this may well be preliminary, you'll have to tell me, but the first-year budget is seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, out of which thirty-five thousand is allocated for general and administrative. It's like less than five percent.
Yeah, I think the way that the organization, the steering committee was thinking about the budget, they sort of, sorry, spread out the administrative cost throughout the program areas, but they can talk about the dedicated staff, ED, and other project managers that they will be supporting the organization, and it's much higher cost, it's just that the way that they sort of structured that chart is that they sort of spread it out, the administrative cost among those program areas, whether it was sanitation, district marketing, whatever, but sales have a better picture, clearer picture about what those costs are dedicated to, administrative courses.
So they contemplate having a full-time executive director?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Kramani?
That was my question.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gold.
Sure. Also, first of all, thank you, but also following up on the discussion and questions on Monday, some was on budget, but also, as we looked at the presentation from Monday, it spoke about the favorability of this for the stakeholders, right? And so the residential stakeholders, which I think, as I recall, there were about thirteen, there was high favorability, but for the exempt, who I think don't pay in, right, if I read that, and for the non-exempt, the favorability was less than fifty percent. So just want to understand a little bit, I know this is community-driven presumably, but the numbers that we're seeing from the community suggest that the favorability is not there. So what's the disconnect, or is it something, are they unhappy with the rate, or what's the, like?
So the steering committee would be best to answer that, but just to kind of talk about, as part of the legislation, right, we're required to make sure for any effort that we move forward, that they receive at least fifty-one percent of the assessed value as well as fifty-one percent of the real property owners, because we know there could sometimes be a disconnect, you know, people own more properties, blah, 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 right? So we look at two of those things, but we also look at merchants, because we know that they are a part of these bids, they have an interest, and we also look at the residents who would be experiencing the services that the bid provided, and that's what we, as SBS, look at as the broad-based support. So we look at all of those numbers. I do apologize, I don't know what was presented on Monday, but just to kind of go over the numbers, in the district, there are commercial properties, which include mixed-use properties, right, residential and commercial on the bottom, there are seventy-nine, and then just solely residential properties, there were thirteen in the district. Now, if you look at both of them together, we do have fifty-four percent in terms of favorable reports, and we did not receive any no ballots. So that's another thing that we take into consideration when we look about moving these things forward.
Got it. But perhaps it'd be, maybe it'd be helpful if that steering committee can maybe prepare those answers, because as I recall, and we don't have it up today, on the residential side, there was good favorability, it was something like, it was north of sixty percent, as I recall, on the thirteen properties, but on the exempt, there were two other categories shown, exempt, and then effectively the non-exempt, the commercial. Folks, the commercial folks, it was less than fifty percent, and on the, I want to say it was forty-eight or forty-two percent, and on the exempt, which was surprising, it was also in the forties. Now, the exempt, as I understand, that don't pay in, but basically, if we look at the three categories presented to us, take out the residential who, actually, let's take that for a second, the residential pay in or they don't pay into this?
In this particular bid, the residential will be paying, but in most cases, most residential, solely, they pay a dollar.
Right. Got it, got it, got it. So they don't have the lion's share, if you will. So there were thirteen residential, again, that we had good favorability, but for the commercial, it was less than fifty percent, and, you know, as I say, understand this is really driven by the community's need, but, you know, it's just, it's a little hard to understand why, at the end of the day, when you guys go back and survey it, you're finding less than fifty percent favorability, but, you know, we're still saying this community needs.
Yeah, the stand, like, once again, the stand committee could speak to that, the non-exempts, because I'm not sure who they're including in that category.
Sure.
But when we think about the outreach phase, I just want to recognize, it's very challenging for our bids, right? I mean, these proposals, proposed bids into an outreach, they have to get through the sort of menageries of who these LLCs are and get responses, so that's why we do look at whether or not we receive any no oppositions to these ballots. We didn't receive any for these, and then when we look at the real property owners, so that can be mixed-use or solely residential, and when we look at them collectively, we do have over fifty-four percent in terms of our response rate.
Got it. So let me just ask one other, and again, it might be for the steering committee. It'd be helpful, I think, for us to understand, you know, I know we've spoken a little bit about community need, but really what the genesis of this bid, right? In other words, so this has been in process for some time, what got that started? Where, like, you know, in other words, when we feel that there's community desire for it, how we determine that? Like, what do we do? Is it surveys? Is it discussions?
Well, I mean, this is a wonderful story. You know, it started out with a Commercial District Needs Assessment that we worked with a local organization to do, and as part of that assessment, they have to not only, you know, survey property owners, but the consumers, the people who are living in this district. And one of the things that came out of that CDNA that was done, that was completed in two thousand and seventeen but started in two thousand and sixteen, is that they wanted to have something that collectively supported the commercial corridor on the east side. So that was sort of the genesis, and we worked with the Uptown Grand Central Group to kind of help build their capacity to do that work. At first, they were partnering with Union Sediment, but then eventually were able to get their own funding to kind of spearhead this effort. So we're happy to see them in sort of this sort of arc to now be at a place where they can, you know, officially have an organization that really supports the commercial needs east of Fifth Avenue.
Got it, got it, okay. Yeah, and as I say, I think if you can, it would definitely be helpful to, you know, maybe we can get an answer in writing, if that's easier, for the steering committee to just really understand, because I'm still, the way you're explaining it makes a lot of sense, but it sounds like it's really perhaps the consumers who spend time in the area who are asking for this, where the people who are actually gonna have to foot the bill are, you know, we have less than that fifty percent favorability, so I'm having a little bit of difficulty gelling those two. So maybe, you know, as I say, it's probably unfair, because you don't have the data in front of you, but perhaps whoever's looking.
Well, I mean, the data does say that the real property owners, which the legislation requires, is fifty-four percent as a response rate, which is above the fifty-one that is required.
Fifty-four is a positive response, it is, or just a...
A positive response rate.
Okay, because the numbers that were put in front of us basically had a skewing there. It showed forty-eight percent on one category, forty-two in another, and sixty-one percent on the residential, and the resi was only thirteen units.
So what I believe what was shown, if I'm looking at my data, was just the commercial, just the mixed-use, which, once again, that's just one part of what is required, all of the real property owners, so that means residential and commercial mixed-use have to be a part of that response rate.
So what we saw was...
Yeah, just saw the commercial.
Yeah. No, we saw residential as well. We saw residential, exempt, and a third category, which I believe is commercial, so not to, you know, as I say, maybe it's easier if the data, that you have the more comprehensive data, you know, perhaps you share with us.
Yeah, I can, we can definitely have my team break it down and distill that information Yeah, I can, we can definitely have my team break it down and distill that information for you all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi, Commissioner Brown, thank you very much for being here today. I have basically three questions. The first one is, can you explain the unique formula that's been used here to determine what the taxable rate for the extra bid services will be?
So this, there's a unique formula here. Okay, just to take a step back, each bid has a unique formula. It's like, it does, it, there's no standard formula that any one bid uses, right? Sometimes they just use assessed values, sometimes they just use square footage, sometimes they use a combination of that and other aspects. In this case, they will be using, um, frontage, um, as, as eighty percent of, of the assessment. And then the twenty percent will be what they're calling taxable value. Um, it's really assessed value, right? But what came up out of the discussions in this steering committee that there's, you know, some, um, affordable tax exemptions that some of the properties receive, and that it may skew what their, um, actual assessed value is because they actually pay him less. So this was an attempt by the steering committee to add some level of equity in terms of how each of the properties were being, um, assessed.
But NIT, if I understand it, NITA property is not included?
No. But this is for, like, resident, like, there, uh, so, uh, I haven't, haven't been a planner for East Harlem. I know that there's a lot of UDAPS and, and housing projects that went, uh, that would develop in this area that do receive some tax exemptions. So they just wanted to make sure that that twenty percent, that, um, they were gauging it off of their taxable, uh, assessment rather than what the assessment says on a DOF log.
So cate, explain to me the category A versus the category B.
So there's two, there's two categories, there's A1. And A1, um, that's for class A properties that are eighty thousand square feet.
Or more.
More. And then A2 is for the, the below, eighty thousand square or less. So A1 are the larger properties, and they pay, um, eighty percent of, so there's, is a different rate under there. So they're, they're, what, because everything is by, uh, the linear, they wanted to make sure that there was, that they weren't paying a lot more because of their, um, the, the, uh, the assessed value that they would have because they are much larger building.
Right, but how many of those over eighty are NITA properties or otherwise not-for-profit?
Um, we would have to, I would have to get the breakdown of that.
Okay, I would like that.
Yeah, we, we'll have that.
And then the second, what is the current occupancy rate for a hundred, East one hundred and twenty-fifth Street and this bid area? How many vacant storefronts do we have? How many?
Um, I could get you that, 'cause we do have a platform to assess that. There are some vacant, um, uh, storefronts, especially concentrated around the one hundred and twenty-first Street and Lexington Avenue, uh, corridor. But we can act, get an accurate number for what the vacancy rate is for, um, this district and this corridor.
Okay, I would really like that to understand. And were those owners of the properties that had commercial vacancies included in all of the survey work?
Yeah, outreach has to be to any property owner, whether it's vacant or occupied.
Right, and generally speaking, but specifically in this instance, can, generally speaking in commercial properties, the owners pass along electricity, utilities, and taxes? Do the owners pass along the bid assessments also to the commercial properties?
That we don't know. I mean, we know that is a thing, but, you know, it varies, uh, depending on the district. Um, so we don't know if that is written into a lease that's sort of, it's sometimes written in a lease agreement, so we don't have those agreements and to know if that's going to be the case.
And would you, this is my last question, would you posit that if these assessments are being passed on to the commercial tenancy, would that make it more difficult to reoccupy properties that are vacant or less difficult?
Um, I mean, that's a, a rational assumption, um, but we don't know.
Okay.
We can't assume that yet, yeah.
Okay, so if you could get me the answer on the occupancy rate, um, and to the extent you can talk to the steering committee about how many of the leases would allow for a pass-along, and how that would affect the rents that they would, that one would expect to be able to get?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it's...
I would, I would say that, I think that might be difficult because that would require then the bid to then know about the lease agreements that each of the property owners will have with the merchants. So I, I think that's why we don't have real data about that. We know that that is a thing, but we haven't did some sort of survey and assess, assess how many of those merchants in bids are currently getting that pass-through.
And it goes back to Commissioner Gold's question, uh, whether the merchants who are there, or future merchants who might want to go there, are in fact cognizant of this increase that might happen, and whether that will help them lead to a more fully robust commercial strip, or will it leave things as they are because the rents will be higher than people are willing to pay 'cause they're not willing to pay them right now?
Yeah, and listen, it's a, it's a great question, and as, you know, city planning as well as SBS think about storefront vacancy and how it impacts various neighborhoods, this is something we can definitely sort of think about as we're sort of assessing this challenge across the city.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your answers and your candor.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, Mr. Brown, thank you again. Good to see you.
Happy New Year.
You too. Uh, next up is Jordan Barrowitz. Welcome, good to see you too.
Thank you, Commissioners, uh, for the opportunity to testify in favor of the formation of the East one hundred and twenty-fifth Street Business Improvement District. My name is Jordan Barrowitz. I'm the co-chair of the steering committee, and I represent the Durst Organization who own eighteen hundred Park Avenue. We greatly appreciate the work of our colleagues at SBS, who have been invaluable guides through this process, and thank you to the staff of CPC for your assistance. Uh, I wanna highlight and expand on two aspects of our application. Um, our budget is relatively large for the size and nature of our catchment area, um, as my colleagues will elucidate. We are more than just a busy commercial and transit corridor. We have the highest concentration of substance abuse and mental health facilities in New York City, and the wear and tear on our streets is immense. From the inception of this process, we understood that for the bid to be successful, we needed a street cleaning budget twice what is normal. This required a, uh, considerable financial investment by members of the bid, and explains why our administrative costs are lower than bids with similar assessment rules. Um, we have a unique assessment formula. Custom bed our assessment formula to reflect the diversity and complexity of our district. The formula uses two classes of, uh, frontage and avail, variable to capture the development potential of the corridor while providing a discounted rate for properties with affordable housing. We worked hard to craft the formula that was equitable and fair and did not overly burden a few property owners. While it's unconventional to include a residential assessment, the diverse topology and uses in our district and our all-hands approach to improving our community necessitated this residential assessment. Um, I can also, if you like, speak, uh, in a little bit more depth on, um, the, uh, response rates from some of the different classes. Uh, Commissioner Gold, you had asked about the exempt class and why that number is low. Um, largely, those are government agencies, that's, um, who own those properties, HPD, EDC. They, while we tried, we elicited the responses, they don't really respond. Um, the MTA did, um, so they are included with it. That was a major coup, um, getting the MTA to respond. Um, so that why, that's why that number is, is low. It, it's not that we didn't speak to these people, they just have a policy of not responding. Um, for the number of commercial properties, um, we went and we talked to everybody. Um, and frequently in these conversations, uh, we move people from no to neutral, right? And so, while they didn't, um, uh, agree to sign on, they agreed not to be in opposed to it. And if you, and it's very important, there's two metrics here. There's the assessment value in properties, right? The assessment, the assessed value, we have a seventy-three percent. So that captures the totality of the...
I'm gonna treat this as a response to Commissioner Gold's question, just so you can answer it, and then just because, yeah, I think it is directly a response, keep, keep finishing up.
So the seventy-three percent response rate is the, is basically of the assessed value, you know, which you could sort of interpret as sort of square footage, right? So we're getting a vast majority of the square footage in the district. The individual number of properties is lower. That includes, you know, absentee landlords, you know, uh, you know, opaque LLCs. We, we pounded the pavement and went and talked to every merchant, every property owner that we could, um, get on the phone or email with. But tha- that's, that's where that variation falls. I, I, I hope that's helpful.
Commissioner Gold.
Yeah, it, it is, I guess, I think the, so, so two things. One, as we look at the numbers that you put forward, um, I guess, is it fair to look at the approval rates than are the yeses and everything else are either no's or no answer? Is that the way to think about that?
Yeah, yeah, there's yes, no, and no answer. We have no, we didn't get a no.
Okay.
So we have zero no.
There's yes and no answer.
Yes, no answer, and no, but we didn't get a no.
Okay, okay, got it, got it, got it. So it's yeses, and, and then I guess the second piece is it sounds like you've been involved with this for some time and are pretty close to the ground. Um, I guess, as I say, just really trying to understand if that's the response that we're getting from the property owners, the seventy-three percent is helpful. That's, that's actually a good metric. Um, not knowing the landscape or thinking about the landscape that well, I assume there are some big, um, owners, you know, perhaps Durst Organization in there, who, who, you know, I, I guess some of the distribution might skew that. Um, but I, I guess wanting to really understand where this came from, right? 'Cause it's, it's a relatively small bid, bid in an area, and if the neighborhood, right, the vo, the votes are, are astoundingly no answer.
Yeah.
Then there, there's a group, there's someone in there, or some group of people in there who feel that this is a good idea. That's, that's what I'm trying to get to. It's not, I'm not trying to argue it, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
We're presenting it as something that the neighborhood wants, but the neighborhood won't answer. So that's, that's helped me.
I, I, I can assure you that the, the, um, that there's been a longstanding desire to put this bid together. And this, this bid is the evolution of, um, a merchants' association that started fifteen years ago. Um, and, uh, there's been a desire to move forward with, um, uh, with this bid for a long time. My, my colleagues who, uh, are, um, to use a real estate term, a little bit closer to the bricks, uh, on the street can, can speak to, um, the outpouring of support for this bid in this community. Um, it is an ex, uh, I don't know if, um, Commissioners have an opportunity to get up to that stretch of the woods very often. It is an extremely challenged retail cor- corridor. It, it, it's sometimes a time machine back to the late eighties and nineties. And, um, the, the desire and the need to do supplemental sanitation is, is critical. Without the supplemental sanitation, the, the merchants can't, the property owners can't rent their storefronts. Um, the people will not do, open up stores with the, um, levels of, of trash on the street without the bid. So, uh, uh, addressing Commissioner Benjamin's point, that yes, there could be incremental increases in rent if that, if that's the way the, uh, leases are structured. But the desire of the, of the merchants for this organization is, is intense.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Barrowitz, uh, thank you for your testimony. Good to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Um, I have some familiarity, you may recall, with, with the site. I believe it's known as eighteen hundred Park Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
So I can't resist the opportunity to ask you, uh, what is, in your view, what is the destiny of, of that most vital site in the middle of what would be this, this bid?
Uh, I mean, I, you know, the, that, that site has tremendous potential, especially with the expansion of the, of the Second Avenue subway, right? It, it will terminate basically at one hundred and twenty-fifth Street and Park Avenue. Um, a- a- as you know, the, um, construction of a subway line um, is a complicating factor in the development of a site. Um, and, uh, exactly, uh, how, um, the MTA will stage that construction has a very large impact on the timetable of the development of that site. So there's a certain amount of, of limbo, uh, um, in that regard. So, you know, th- there's, there's certainly a possibility, I think that the, the highest and best use, if you can find a brave tenant on that site, would be a commercial site.
Yeah.
Um, that would be terrific. Um, you need a brave tenant. Um, and if that doesn't work, you would probably see it developed as, you know, some form of mixed-income residential.
So is the stronger inclination at this point, a commercial, uh, development than a mixed-use?
I, 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 I think that would be the desire, but prac, as a practical matter, I, I, I think a residential development is probably more likely. Um, but if you could find a user, you have one in mind, um, I think that would be, uh, that, that site to be developed as, as, as commercial would be, you know, terrific.
No, I'm just...
Yeah.
A planner.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Benjamin.
Hello, Mr. Barrowitz, good to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Um, I had asked Commissioner Brown about the occupancy rate. So I'm hoping, given that you are with the Durst Organization, you have a, a recent sense of what the occupancy rate is.
I'm gonna defer to my colleague Carrie, who will be up here in a second. But occupancy i- i- is not terrible on the, on the, um, along East one hundred and twenty-fifth Street. Uh, it, it's, um, one of the reasons is a lot of smoke shops. Um, uh, but it's, and a lot of the vacancies are due to, uh, many of the sites are, are development sites and are in some process of, um, either, um, being torn down or, or, um, being entitled or such. So it, it's, it's, it's not so much the lack of operating storefronts, it's the, it's the pressure that the conditions on the street put on those operators, which is, is the driving need for the, for the, for the bid.
I mean, it's, which is why I would have thought that potentially security, particularly around the Lexington Avenue subway station.
Mm-hmm.
And the Madison Avenue cut, all those...
Yes, these are, these are, these are great questions, and we, and, and...
But security was a pretty small part of the budget.
Security is, and, and, um, the, the challenge is that, um, there's, there's no shortage of members of the NYPD in that area. I mean, there could always be more, but if you're up there, you'll see a command center. There's, there's a lot, there's a fair number of cops. We, as a bid of this size, can't deploy, uh, a security force that would be, um, that would make a difference, right? So what we can do best is supplemental sanitation. We talked about this a lot. We have a position, or have a position, to do some coordination of a lot of the different social service agencies and city agencies, um, uh, to try to do a better and more effective job, um, with, uh, managing the impacts of the, um, uh, clients of those mental health and addiction programs that are in the district. We, we think that's probably the most effective use of our resources, is in that coordination. On the enforcement side, y- yes, there could always be more NYPD, but we, we can't put together the, enough of an impact staff-wise to, to do security in a meaningful way. But what we can do is keep the streets clean.
That is good, but I know a number of people, and I am in this neighborhood with some frequency, who prefer to take the train to Lenox Avenue and then take the bus east because the Lexington Avenue...
Yes, we're, a hundred percent, yeah.
Getting more bodies to walk the street to use these shops as opposed to taking the bus seems to me would be part of the bid's...
Yes, and, and...
Mission.
Yeah, it's, it's, listen, we're, not to delve too deeply into, you know, urban theory here, we're, we're trying to make the streets as comfortable a place for pedestrians and people to use, right? After a lot of thought, the most effective way that we can do that is by keeping the streets as clean and orderly as possible. And, and not just, not just sanitation, lighting, program... not just sanitation, lighting, programming, these are all things that we feel like, you know, positive uses drive out negative uses, right? So what we're trying to do is flood that zone with positive uses in the hopes that we can put negative uses to the past. And, and we have a good track record of that. If you look at the plaza under the viaduct, um, you know, we, we've, the, the Uptown Grand Central, which is our nonprofit partner, they've been running programming there for years. When they run their programming, that plaza is a lovely, beautiful place that people in the community flock to. When the programming isn't there, negative uses move in. So our plan ultimately is try to flood that zone with as many positive uses as possible. That's what we can do. And then, you know, on the, on the, you know, public safety side of the stuff, of the ledger, you know, we think they will make it a lot easier for the NYPD.
My last question, why not go over to First Avenue?
Um, you know, we.
Particularly on the south side of one hundred and twenty.
So, so, you know, when we draw these lines, it's, you know, how much more is it going to cost to service these areas? And can we reap revenue from these sites to, um, offset those costs? And our boundaries are really driven by that formula. If there's a lot of, um, exempted properties, then we, we can't afford to go further. And, and that really is what drove, um, the, the boundaries, is that, that formula, we'll pick up more space, this is where, we'll pick up more frontage, this is where the need really is, but do we have a means of paying for it? And then just one more thing, getting back to your question about the taxable value, it's not for nicer properties, nicer properties are exempt, it is for a hundred percent affordable buildings and mixed income buildings, which is, there have been a significant number and some very large ones in the district. So we wanted to not burden those a hundred percent affordable buildings with additional assessment.
Okay. Thank you for your answers, I appreciate them.
Good thing. Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Goodrich?
You always like to warm it up.
It always needs warming. Uh, I have a general bid question. Um, some neighborhoods have terrible trash pickup and others are spotless, um, but everyone is serviced by the same city sanitation department. Bids provide the supplemental sanitation to make sure that those neighborhoods look cleaner. And as I listen to this presentation, and this is not in particular to Harlem, but I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, these are private nonprofits that are funded by city government. And I'm wondering if.
Not funded.
You know, how bid budgets are determined and whether that results in inequality in some neighborhoods being more well-maintained than others using city funds.
Well, I, 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 I can only speak to East one hundred and twenty-fifth Street, um, uh, and, um, I mean, I, I think, I, I think it's an, it's a, yeah, it's a, it's an excellent question. You know, this, E- East one hundred and twenty-fifth Street, it, you know, it is not, um, you know, one of the highest rent, you know, commercial districts in, in the city by, um, uh, any metric. But I, I, I think, uh, our process was bringing together, uh, a really diverse group of people on the steering committee, uh, representatives of, uh, nonprofit organizations, tenants, small business people, large property owners, small property owners. And w- we made the decision to, in effect, tax ourselves, right? I mean, that's what a, that's what a bid does. It's, the assessment applies only to the catchment area, right? So we decided that in order to, you know, improve our community, we were willing to pay more and to convince our neighbors to pay more. And, you know, I, I think it would be great if every community in the city could have a bid, and, you know, maybe one day we will. But it was, uh, you know, a very thoughtful, long, um, uh, process. And we, we really worked very hard to be inclusive to all the, all the different voices in, in our community.
Yeah, because this was, if I am correct, this East Harlem, this is the first bid in East Harlem.
Yes.
And it was the only part of Manhattan that didn't have a bid.
It's the only community or district that doesn't have a bid in it, yes.
And people, you know, will go to certain neighborhoods and say, it's not well-maintained trash pickup and blame people, but in reality, not a lot of, it's not great city sanitation services. So I'm wondering how these private nonprofits make the difference, but they're funded differently in different neighborhoods, using city fu- I mean, am I getting this correctly? They're using city funds?
No, no. I, I think, if I can just jump in for a sec.
Okay, great.
I think the, the point that Mr. Barowitz is making about the businesses within this catchment area electing to assess themselves, they are assessing themselves. So these are not, those are not public dollars, those are private dollars.
Right.
That are supplementing city services. So the private dollars that are raised through the bid assessments are governed by the bid board and their, the governance structure of the bid and are used to provide those extra services on top of what the city is doing. But those are private dollars, not public.
So the Times Square bid is not funded by the city government?
Private dollars assessed, assess- assessing corporations, assessed on the corporations that are within the area of the Times Square bid. And that's really how all the, all the bids work, Grand Central Partnership, Downtown Alliance, et cetera. Good, thank you. Um, okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Barowitz. We appreciate it. Thanks for being with us. Let's wel- welcome up Kat Peeler.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I am not Kat Peeler, I am Carrie King.
Okay, well let's.
Thank you. We are, we are, we are switching our order. Um, my name is Carrie King. I'm the, I'm a resident of East one twenty-sixth Street, right off of the East one twenty-fifth Street corridor. And I'm also the director of Uptown Grand Central, the nonprofit that Jordan referenced. Um, we got our start about ten years ago, in large part because there was no bid to serve the East one twenty-fifth Street area. To this day, East Harlem remains the only community district in Manhattan without a business improvement district. In 2013, a group of local small businesses, mostly women and people of color, got together to help a series of volunteer street cleanups. Later, they formalized into a merchants' association at the time called the New Harlem East Merchants Association, or NEMA. And then a few years after that, we formed Uptown Grand Central, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit, focused on cleaning and greening, public art, public space, small business support, community development, and neighborhood advocacy. Over the years, we have thankfully been supported by grants from Small Business Services, our council member Deputy Speaker Diana Yala, and other city agencies and donors. Three years ago, it was Uptown that brought together the individuals who became the steering committee to form the East one twenty-fifth Street bid. What Uptown has found over the years is that the work of cleaning East one twenty-fifth Street and the surrounding blocks is much too large a job for a small nonprofit. The area is a transit hub, meaning we have tens of thousands of people per day commuting through the Lexington Avenue four, five, six subway line, as well as the Harlem one twenty-fifth Street Metro North Station, as well as the N sixty Busta LaGuardia Airport. That is a lot of people to clean up after. And as many of you know, over the past fifty years, the area has become home to an over-concentration of drug treatment facilities and shelters. One of our main intersections at one twenty-fifth Street and Lexington Avenue, um, receives two thousand individuals per day from the shel- shelters on Randall's Island. Um, the resulting sidewalk conditions and garbage needs a much more robust response than what our little nonprofit can maintain. The East one twenty-fifth Street area is home to a number of great small businesses with great products, including some of our founding members, Sisters Caribbean Cuisine, The Brownstone, Omar Shadi Skincare, Gin Jan Cafe. However, they consistently face depressed sales due to depressed foot traffic because potential customers do not want to come here and spend. They find East one twenty-fifth Street too unsafe to visit and too chaotic to linger and to continue to spend their money. Our goal in creating the bid is to bring together greater resources to keep our sidewalks clean and feeling more safe and walkable. Our goal is to help stabilize the East one twenty-fifth Street corridor so that our small businesses, cultural institutions, and public spaces can thrive. Uptown looks forward to working together with the bid to provide more resources and advocate to the city to help us solve the challenges of the East one twenty-fifth Street corridor. It's our goal that by so doing, we will help fo- foster culturally responsive and responsible neighborhood development for Northeast Harlem.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for being with us. Uh, let's move on to Kat Peeler.
Morning. Good morning. My name is Kat Peeler. I am a resident of Northeast Harlem and the owner of a local small business. I am also a member of the Board of Uptown Grand Central and part of the steering committee for the formation of the East Harlem one twenty-fifth Street bid. Having lived close, just like Carrie, to the East one hundred and twenty-fifth Street corridor for nineteen years, I can testify to how deeply the area is in need of community and economic development. Our neighborhood is oversaturated with an overconcentration of drug treatment centers and shelters that on a daily basis attract thousands of people to our streets and sidewalks. As many of you who have studied the history of redlining know, these facilities were placed by design in low-income communities of color. What this means for our small businesses, a large number of which are owned by women and people of color, is depressed foot traffic, since most potential customers do not want to shop or stop to eat along East one twenty-fifth Street. As part of the East Harlem one twenty-fifth Street bid formation, uh, I am part of that because also by design, I want to see our neighborhood thrive. Increased street cleaning and coordination of public safety strategies are the top two requests of our local stakeholders as determined by our Needs Assessment Survey. By creating a bid, we will have the resources to begin to address many of the challenges that our neighborhood has faced for so long. The group of people that has come together as part of the bid formation process includes residents and small business owners like me, plus representatives from schools and cultural institutions, plus property owners who have both been in the neighborhood for years or have more recently joined in advance of the construction of the Second Avenue subway. We all represent different interests from across the neighborhood, and yet, we have worked really well together over the past three years, in large part because we share the same goals of wanting our neighborhood to be a place where our sidewalks are safe and clean and where mental health is supported. Our goal is for East one twenty-fifth Street to be a place where our businesses and cultural institutions grow and prosper and show East Harlem at its best. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. We appreciate your being here with us. Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, let's go next to Brian Lee, who I believe is on Zoom. Do we have Ms. Lee?
We are trying to get Brian into the space. Give us one second.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
We can, welcome.
Hi, hi, thank you so much for having me. Um, so first of all, my name is Brian Lee. Um, I'm a lifetime New York City resident and also a business owner in Midtown Manhattan. Um, so I've been actually running a vocational beauty school for over thirty years on Thirty-Sixth Street. And I can testify that many of our students, or a majority of our students, are, uh, legal immigrants learning a trade. Uh, we require them to have a minimum, uh, education of at least a high school diploma. And so these are educated, highly skilled, um, legal immigrants who are trying to live a decent life in Manhattan. And a lot of, uh, the students reside in the area that we are talking about today. Um, they are not content with their, uh, their way of living, the cost of living. And so, uh, I am in favor of this bid to improve, um, one hundred and twenty-fifth Street's, uh, properties so that, uh, my students, who by the hundreds, uh, live there, can have, um, uh, an improved way of life, improved, uh, conditions, especially in the sense of, of sanitation, which was discussed, uh, previously. So I would just like to say that, um, as, as someone who is sending out highly skilled, educated, uh, legal immigrants into the, uh, workforce, that, um, you hear me out and let's get this done. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Okay, let me see if there's anybody else wishing to be heard on the East Harlem one hundred and twenty-fifth Street, uh, bid, calendar thirteen, going once, going twice. Okay. Seeing done, we'll close the hearing on that item, and we will open the hearing on the next item, uh, of today. Madam Secretary, what is that item?
Borough of the Bronx, calendar number fourteen, one zero nine three dash one zero nine five, Jerome Avenue, UDAP, CD four, C two five zero zero nine one, HAX, public hearing in the matter of an application for a UDAP designation, project approval, and dispo- disposition of city-owned property concerning one zero nine three dash one zero nine five, Jerome Avenue, UDAP.
Great. And, uh, for calendar fourteen, we have an applicant team, which includes a variety of people, and I'm going to let you know who's here. We have Susannah Tharian, Karina Naula, Derek Lovett, Kenneth Morrison, Ronald Schulman, Astrid Walker Stewart, Ted Weinstein, and Amit Singh. So welcome. Whenever you're ready, you have ten minutes?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Astrid Walker Stewart, representing HPD. I'm joined by Ron Schulman, representing the development team, Ted Weinstein from HPD, Susannah Tharian, who's joining us virtually, Derek Lovett, and Ken Morrison from the development team are also present to answer questions after the presentation. Ten ninety-three, ten ninety-five Jerome Avenue is a sixty-unit, a hundred percent affordable new construction project, eighteen units of which are affordable independent residences for seniors, heirs units, with super's unit using HPD's neighborhood construction program, um, also known as NCP for short. NCP is a program that facilitates small-scale, affordable, mixed-income developments. The project is located in the High Bridge neighborhood of Community District Four in the Bronx and would be developed as per zoning. The site currently contains two identical three-story buildings comprising a total of sixteen vacant studio units and two vacant commercial units. The land use actions being disposition of city-owned land to a developer to be selected by HPD and designation and approval of an urban development action area and project. The ULOP application was unanimously approved by Community Board Four after the BP hearing Bronx Borough President Gibson issued a recommendation to approve this project as well. The project is directly across from Reverend Wendell Foster Park, a sixteen-acre public park. The surrounding neighborhood features a dense mix of residential, commercial, institutional, and open space uses. It is characterized by multi-story, multifamily buildings, neighborhood convenience stores, and public spaces. It is also within the vicinity of, uh, Yankee Stadium, Stadium, and the Bronx Civic Center. The site is also just a few blocks away from, uh, a number of transit options, including the four and D train, and an extensive bus network. I'm now turn on, turn it over to Ron from the development team to provide further detail on the project. Thank you.
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm Ron Schulman, principal owner of Best Development Group. We're advising this development team and working with HPD over the last, uh, three years or so. I think you know, MBD's been around for fifty years. Derek Lovett is the president, CEO. They are the sponsor with Lamore Development, and we're advising them. And Stat Architecture has been the architect for, uh, the last several years. Oops, sorry. Okay, so this building, as you can see, exists on the left, which is a dilapidated vacant building. It's going to be replaced by an eleven-story Hanson Building on the park, Wendell Foster Park. It's going to reflect the architecture of this district where there are some very nice buildings on Jerome Avenue, across from the park. And Mr. Chair, this is a thirty-minute commute to Midtown, to Grand Central. It's one sixty-seventh Street subway, thirty minutes to Midtown. We're offering sixty affordable studios, one-twos and three-bedroom apartments, one super apartment, range of incomes between thirty to eighty percent AMI. The building is just slightly below fifty thousand square feet, and it'll be financed by a nine percent tax credit allocation that we have to win and the NCP program, which will be the subsidy, plus a bank loan. The building itself has a central entrance, main lobby, and there'll be two community rooms on the ground floor. One will be a gym and one will be a meeting room, and then there'll be a second-floor bike room and also a office for service coordinator where we will provide services for the seniors who will be living in this building, eighteen senior apartments, and also for the residents, family residents will be forty-two apartments. This is just the ground floor. There's one recreation room on the left side of the slide and one on the right side. Both rooms will be available for all the tenants to use. The back of this building is a slope not capable to be used for outdoor recreation, so the indoor recreation will be ample, and then, of course, the park is across the street, which is fifteen acres. The breakdown of the units is on your screen. We have eleven studios, twenty-one bedrooms, eighteen twos, three bedrooms, and one two-bedroom for the superintendent. Incomes are a wide array of incomes, between twenty-seven to seventy-seven percent of AMI, plus eight formerly homeless tenants. The idea here is to throw out a wide net for maximum affordability from twenty-five thousand to one hundred twenty-five thousand, people who live in the neighborhood, people who are couples, people who are young people, making decent money, can live in this building, and the building apartments will be designed to HPD standards. Oops, back up for a second. So if you have any questions, we're here to answer them. We have the sponsor, we have our architecture team, and HPD, of course. Any questions?
Great, well, thank you very much. Let me start with the vice chairman.
Thank you, Chair. Maybe I'll put this question to Ted Weinstein and people. He hadn't been around too long, but he may be able to know this. Ted, in the write-up, I believe I read that former residents of the existing buildings that are going to be demolished would be given a preference in terms of possible occupancy in this new building. One, is that correct? And two, how would you implement that? And how are you going about identifying these folk at this point?
Okay, the intent has been to do that. At the point that the projects started being worked on, there only were a few left in the building out of the eighteen units. They have been relocated, particularly in other buildings managed by MBD, and they have the right to come back if they would like, but there would only be a few. And we're still working out the details. Usually that's something that we do with rehab buildings, that are then going to go in gut rehab and then tenants come back. It's a little more unusual with a new construction, but we've been in communication with various parts of the agency to figure out exactly what does that mean, you know, happen. And there may not be any that desire to come back. They may be happy where they are now, but at least a few will have that option.
So you don't know how many at this point?
We have four tenants that are, three are seniors that are living in our senior buildings, and one is a family that's living in our family buildings. They're all under sixty percent of AMI, and they all have relocation agreements, and they have the option to come back. It's been a long time. They've been out for a couple of years, and we're still a year before we break ground, so we'll see where they are, but they do have the option to come back.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I don't see any further questions for you all, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Let me see if there are any members of the public who wish to be heard on calendar fourteen. Beyond the applicant team, seeing none, we'll close the hearing on fourteen. Madam Secretary, if you would not mind introducing the next item.
Thank you, Chair. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, Brownsville NCP. CD sixteen, calendar number fifteen, C two five zero zero three six, HAX. Calendar number sixteen, C two five zero three zero three seven, ZMK. Calendar number seventeen, N two five zero zero three eight, ZRK. Public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map amendment, zoning text amendment, U-DAP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning Brownsville NCP.
Wonderful, and on behalf of this application, we have an applicant team that includes Alina Farista, Amara Hernandez, Halas Saleh, Gabriel Fernandez, Michelle De Lausse, and welcome back to many of you who are long-timers here, so thank you. Whenever you're ready, you have ten minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, my name is Amara Hernandez. I'm a senior borough planner with HPD. Thank you for the opportunity to present today on Brownsville NCP. I'm here today with Michelle De Lausse, Executive Director with Fifth Avenue Committee, and Gabriel Fernandez, Project Manager, and they'll be presenting with me as well. The applicant of Brownsville NCP is HPD. The project sponsors Fifth Avenue Committee, and Fifth Avenue Committee was designated through the HPD NIHOP NCP RFQ in 2017. This project proposes the construction of three new buildings in Brownsville ranging from four stories to nine stories with a total of approximately sixty-one units, sixty of which are affordable rental units with one additional superintendent unit. This would be developed under HPD's Neighborhood Construction Program with twenty-seven affordable rental units in City Council District Forty-One that would be developed as of right pursuant to existing zoning. You know, as you know, HPD has been working to develop affordable rental units on city-owned land to support the goals within the Brownsville Plan, including recent projects like Brownsville Arts Center and Apartments, Louisville New York Four, and Glenville Manor. This project, Brownsville NCP, aims to continue working towards these goals and providing much-needed housing on underutilized vacant-owned land. The requested project approvals through U-LUP include an urban development action area designation and project approval, the approval and disposition of five city-owned lots, and for Site Three only in City Council District Thirty-Seven, a zoning map amendment to rezone an M-one-one area to an R-seven-A district with a C-two-four zoning overlay, and a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH in the zoning area. To provide some location and context for the scattered sites, Site One, four-two Mother Gaston Boulevard, is on block three-seven-four-three, Lot Twelve. Site Two, five-four-six Thomas Boyland, is on Lot Thirty-five-eighteen, Lot Sixty-three. Those both are in City Council District Forty-One. Site Three, seventeen thirty-five St. Mark's Avenue, is on Block Fourteen-fifty-five, Lots Sixty-five, Sixty-six, and Seventy-nine, which is located in City Council District Thirty-Seven. So I'll pass it off to Fifth Avenue Committee to talk further.
Good morning. Um, let's see. Oops. Did I do that the wrong way? Okay. Here we go. So I'm Gabriel Fernandez with Fifth Avenue Committee, and I'm just going to talk to you about the two of the three slides, starting from the smallest to the largest. So this is the site at four-two-five Mother Gaston. It's currently a vacant lot. Mother Gaston is a two-way retail corridor, and what we're proposing here is a four-story walk-up. There'll be a ground floor, either community use or retail, and then three stories of residential, six units in total, two one-bedrooms per floor. The second site, we're going from the smallest to the largest. This is five-four-six Thomas Boyland, and what we're proposing here is a six-story elevator building. This will be a concrete frame, a hundred percent residential, and this one will have twenty-one units. This one and Mother Gaston are both in R-six districts, and they will be built as of right. Now I'll pass this to Michelle. There you are.
Thanks. Hi, everybody, great to see you, and first off, Happy New Year, and congratulations on the city of yes.
Thank you.
Really well done. So I am going to try to make sure I don't screw this up. Okay, the final site is on St. Mark's Place, and this is in Councilmember Sandy Nurse's District. This would be a rezoning from the existing M-one-one to an R-seven-A with a C-two-four overlay. This would be the largest of the three infill buildings with thirty-four units and an outdoor yard for the tenants, a nine-story building. Here's a slide that kind of shows you the existing condition where the HPD lot is. There's a shelter to the left and an existing privately-owned property to the right. As you can see, the proposal is to extend the existing R-seven-A across East New York Avenue to incorporate the site and the lots to its right. And we have, of course, many different sustainability features. Obviously, we'd be building to enterprise green communities. This will be in all, all the buildings will be all-electric, and we anticipate solar on all of the roofs. That middle picture is actually on all-electric, one-hundred percent affordable, eighty-three-unit senior Sarah Building that Fifth Avenue Committee completed on the border of Bay Ridge and Sunset Park called Sunset Ridge, so you kind of see, you know, the Bay Ridge Towers in the background. So all of this, you know, this is, Fifth Avenue Committee's obviously developed thousands of units of affordable housing, and this would be our first project actually in Brownsville that we build, and we are excited to be adding to the affordable units in the community. I'm going to pass it back to HPD to talk more about the unit mix and affordability.
Great. So I stated before, the proposed project would be developed under HPD's Neighborhood Construction Program. This chart is illustrating the current proposed unit mix and affordability across all three sites. So all three buildings provide a mix of studios, one-bedrooms, and two- and three-bedroom units, as well as a super's unit, which is in the largest of the three buildings, thirty-nine percent of which are large enough for family-sized households. The projects also include eight units set aside for formerly homeless households, and with the remaining units dispersed equally across forty and sixty and seventy percent area median income bands, approximately sixty-nine percent of the units will be available to households earning up to sixty percent of area median income. We have heard from CD sixteen that eighty percent area median income is too high, so the proposed unit mix you see on the screen is up to seventy percent AMI with this in mind. However, during our process with them, we heard to deepen affordability, so we are still continuing to work on that and working on alternative scenarios currently. Additionally, all units are marketed on HPD Housing Connect 2.0. So just to provide a little bit of a summary, this is a scattered site project in Brownsville, providing sixty affordable rental units with one superintendent unit. It's going to be under HPD's Neighborhood Construction Program. It also includes approximately four thousand six hundred and fifty square feet of community facility retail space in the smallest of the sites, four-two-five Mother Gaston Boulevard. There's currently not a tenant selected. We are still open to feedback on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Before I go to my colleagues, see if they have any questions. I only have one. We have three sites, all of them need a U-DAP, but only one of them needs a zoning map change, as I understand it. That's Site Three, is that correct?
Correct.
And Site Three, the application seeks to move this site from an M-one-one, bless you, to an R-seven-A with a C-two-four overlay, am I right?
Correct.
Okay, can you just spend a moment just talking about that particular zoning designation for that particular site, since that is the only one of the three that has a zoning map change as proposed?
Sure, I mean, as you can see, you know, for us, the zoning, the rezoning rationale was about extending the existing R-seven-A, and as you can see, there's a number of vacant lots, and some of the lots that will be included will actually come into compliance because there are some residential lots that will be brought into compliance as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Goodrich?
If I could also just add, the portion to the right of R-seven-A was rezoned in the East New York rezoning, so it's also just extending that portion down. Additionally, there would be no displacement of the current manufacturing, so it'd be bringing that into compliance, as Michelle said.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, there's no manufacturing uses in this M-one-one zone.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Commissioner?
Before I ask my question to the applicant, do we have anyone signed up from the public to testify?
As of this moment, we do not.
Okay, so, great. So now, my question was going to be, and is going to be, this is probably the only time I've seen in Brownsville this community project a hundred percent affordable housing, that I can remember, and their reasoning, I know that you slightly addressed it, but their reasoning is that it's not affordable to this particular community. And I'm wondering, you know, I know you mentioned that something may be in the works, that there was a slight shift from eighty percent AMI to seventy percent AMI, but I'm wondering what else can possibly be done to make it more affordable. For example, there are a lot of low-income but not extremely, no, extremely low-income, so the AMI that goes up to thirty percent. I'm wondering if that can be increased, rather than the higher band of the AMI up to sixty percent?
So a couple of things. You know, and I think Ross can probably speak to this, it's pretty typical in Community Board Sixteen for them to say no with modifications, even on a hundred percent affordable projects. And, I mean, the AMI levels in the Community Board, about forty-eight percent are at or around, or below thirty percent of AMI, so their concern about having deeply affordable units is a legitimate one. And so, you know, part of the response thus far has been to lower the upper AMI limits from eighty to seventy. We would love to see more deeply affordable units in the project, usually to get to thirty percent of AMI and below, it's about rental subsidy. It's not something that you really get to through affordable housing finance, it's something you get through rental subsidy. And, you know, that's a conversation that we'll be having with HPD. Obviously, we'll see what happens with the federal government with Section Eight funding and things like that. But, you know, we would love to see more deeply affordable units in the project, and I'll just say, although, you know, forty-eight percent of the local Community Board is at or below thirty percent of AMI, that, you know, over thirty-three percent is between thirty and eighty percent of AMI. So it's not as though it's not serving a segment of the local Community Board who also needs affordable housing, and there's very significant rent burden in the community despite the fact that there's significant presence of public housing, so there are a lot of folks outside of public housing who are rent burdened, who would, you know, all of whom obviously would be eligible for this project.
So, I know, okay, so you mentioned that you would love to see more affordable. Are you working with HPD to make that happen? Are you in talks with them, or is it just sort of like?
No, we're definitely in talks. I'll let HPD speak for themselves, but, I mean, you know, as you get closer to closing is when you, you know, really have those conversations, once you have all your numbers getting finalized, essentially.
So I'm just, just to answer your first question about the CB's no vote, they, there was a variety of concerns that they had with the recommendation, so it wasn't just regarding affordability. But in just in terms of, it was mainly regarding affordability and also not partnering with Central Brooklyn EDC, which is something that would also happen later on in the process. When it comes to affordability, we are currently working on that and working on alternative mixes. Because this project is a smaller project, it doesn't necessarily allow us to be as creative and like increase the amount of units to offset the affordability, so we're just trying to make sure that it's still feasible. But our goal is to still go back to the Community Board throughout the U-LUP process and be able to have that conversation. So that is still the goal, and we are still in conversation with SAC. So, yes, we are, we are talking. So, yes, we are, we are talking.
My last question is just for my own clarification, the energy efficient, the solar panels means that they will, their electric bills, energy bills will be less, right?
Um, the-
It's not a passive house, but-
No, it's, we're not, we're not currently specing to passive house. But the solar panels on buildings of this size would generally cover the central, you know, the building electrical needs. They're, they're not sufficiently sized to really provide benefit beyond that. That being said, keeping operating costs in control obviously helps preserve the affordability of housing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you. Good to see you. I see no members of the public signed up on this one. I'll just give a final call.
Chair, I have my hand up.
Commissioner Sorio has his hand.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Sorio, let me, just give me a second. Come on back, folks, sorry. Commissioner Sorio, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair. Appreciate it. Thanks so much for the presentation. I, I had a couple of questions building on Commissioner Goodrich's questions. First, the question, is a question about the public outreach process and so, thanks so much for the clarifications that you made already. I'm wondering if you can respond to or update us more than anything on your last conversations. Of course, the materials that we have reflect the extent of the discussion before the vote. My understanding is that there's been additional meetings in November. And so I'm wondering if you can share with us, you know, what's your general response or what's the status of, you know, the, the extent to which you can accommodate some of their six items. The recommendations that they're making are very clear and I'm wondering if, I wanted to give you a chance to respond to, to each of them or update us in anything that you've changed since then. Thank you.
Sure. We, we have some more information. If we put our presentation back, we actually have a slide that speaks to that.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Anticipating this question.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's see, we can bring that back. Give us a moment.
Thank you. Let me see, I'll move forward. Yeah. So here, here are the recommendations that the, the Community Board made and this has been ours and HPD's response to all of those recommendations. And I'll, I'll just say that, you know, Fifth Avenue Committee as a 46-year-old nonprofit comprehensive community development corporation, that we seek to work with the Community Board and local stakeholders to address concerns to the greatest extent possible while ensuring that the project, 100% affordable, you know, scattered site project is feasible. And so, you know, as the project moves along, we'll be sure to continue outreach into the local Community Board and other, other stakeholders to address any concerns. We want this, we want to leverage this public investment for the broader community's good. I mean, obviously, 60 residents are going to benefit from the project, but the process by which we build it hopefully can benefit many more people.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. Maybe just to follow up, can you say a little bit more about your response to the first item? So you, you've discussed, you hinted that there's, you're still analyzing what an alternative scenario could look like, but is there anything else that you can provide right now just for us to get a sense of, you know, what you're thinking could be possible in terms of the item number one?
Sure. I mean, I think the biggest thing is now that City of Yes is passed and we have universal affordability, we're going to be doing an analysis about adding additional units. And with that may come an opportunity for some internal cross-subsidy within AMI bands to address the depth of affordability concerns.
How much do you think you can decrease or lower the, the AMI bands? What do you think is, is reasonable at this point to expect?
We don't know yet. We don't know yet.
Okay. When, when do you think that we can have some additional information on that?
I don't think, it's not going to necessarily be before your vote, unfortunately. But I can, you know, again, I can commit to you as an organization that like all we do is build 100% affordable housing and many of which is for formerly homeless folks and individuals with special needs, that we are fully aligned with the recommendation and to the greatest extent possible that we can access public resources to reach more, you know, incomes, lower income bands, we will do so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Including going to the Borough President for resoA money to assist.
Thank you for that. Another quick question, so it sounds like the response to item number two is that you don't think this is possible as far as the scope of work that we're currently discussing? But I'm wondering, you know, what has been sort of like the analysis? Why, why is that? And/or your perspective on, on homeownership opportunities for the district?
Well, I'll just say that when this RFP was issued, it was, you know, issued with this in mind, but I'll, I'll let HPD handle it.
Fair enough, fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, so we, when we went back to, we went to the Community Board a variety of times to, to kind of discuss the project and they brought this up as, you know, consideration for homeownership in their district. We went back and shared that there are actually some upcoming projects in the district that are homeownership, but also shared that the AMIs for homeownership are actually higher and require different closings and, and the term sheets are different. So, you know, we definitely, and IHOP NCP RFQ has homeownership and rental and the sites that are within this project were chosen for rental and there are other sites that were chosen for homeownership that are slated in their district, that are, in their district that they will be seeing very soon. And that was the response that we gave them after we heard that concern. And also subsequently, like the other, the other issues that we heard about the abatement and rodent issues that is currently being addressed, there's, you know, it's a process of multiple abatement processes. I think it's about three or different moments in time that it's going to happen, so hopefully it doesn't occur again, should end in March. We also discussed open space, you know, there's open space within the project currently that we're trying to maintain. And then also provided examples of other zoning changes that occurred similar to the one on Site Three.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. I, I also just wanted to take advantage of the moment to share a little bit of conversation that we had. Probably you, you saw it during the review session where, again, you know, it's, it's, this is a question that is as, about this project as much as it is about the district. And so I was wondering if you have any data that you can share with us in terms of, of the approved projects of a similar scope, especially UDAP? You could, you can share with us how much of what has been approved, which is the data that we have from the Department of City Planning, has been built and occupied. I would love to understand that to create a bit of a context for the scope of work that we're discussing here. Is that, is that something that you can share with the Commission?
We will definitely follow up with that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You know, the second question that I have is, is about the sustainability measures and thanks so much for what you have, really the work that you, the track record that you've been presenting to the Commission in this regard. It's exciting to see the level of commitment, to see that these buildings are going to be 100% electrified and so forth. I'm, I wanted to ask, yeah, and I know that, you know, even though you're referencing really clearly the enterprise standard, there are different interpretations, there could be different interpretations of what this means specifically about net zero. And so, given the scale of the buildings and that you have stated these are not going to be passive, to Commissioner Goodrich's question, I want to understand why aren't we aiming for net zero? What's, what are the constraints? This is the type of scale that, for example, the City of Yes for carbon neutrality identified as the, the, the biggest opportunity for their ultra-low energy standards. And so I want to understand, again, in the spirit of Commissioner Goodrich's question, to connect energy efficiency and sustainability standards with affordability, why aren't we aiming higher?
I, I think it just comes down to, well, the project is being advised by Bright Power as our energy consultant. You know, the current standards that are contemplated exceed New York City Building Code performance by 20%. I think it, I think it just comes down to trying to balance achieving certain green goals with cost, offsetting cost. And it's, you know, the, the project will deploy certain passive house principles, but it's not built to passive house standards, right, which are stricter and more onerous to comply with. That's sort of, that's the direction that we're going.
You know, I, I appreciate the, the response and I, I am aware and I understand that there's a financial cost effectiveness that you have to achieve. But because this is public land, because this is a, such an important public investment, what I want to understand is what are the technical constraints that you're running into that are elevating that cost so much?
Commissioner Sorio, I think the biggest thing is related to term sheets. So I don't think it's a technical constraint. I think it's about public subsidy dollars and trying to, you know, stretch a number of things here. I'll just say scattered site projects, smaller projects are more complicated than a larger project in the regard that you're talking, right? It's three boiler systems instead of one, you know, that kind of a thing. But, you know, again, we're fully aligned with the values and the vision that you're speaking of. You know, we, we are partners with government, right? And, and government has to, you know, there are trade-offs. And we, we will work with HPD to achieve the greatest sustainability that we can possibly can at the same time of reaching deep affordability. You know, these are, in an environment where quite honestly, construction costs and operating costs are going up.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Maybe just, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, well, just to add to what Michelle was saying, there are challenges with, you know, developing and building three sites, which we plan to do simultaneously. The complexity level increases, certain contractors have already, which we've spoken to about this preliminarily, won't do it just because of the staging challenges and logistical challenges. So I, I, you know, there are, you know, in addition to what Michelle was saying, you know, you have to have three security teams onsite and then there are, the sites are themselves, they're a half a mile apart and the logistics associated with staging the work crews so that they, they roll from one site to the next will also involve, you know, some challenges. You know, what, the sites, yeah.
They add cost.
They add cost. I mean, the, the sites are currently vacant, they've been vacant for, for a long time. Our, you know, the residents tell us they want to see the sites improved. The sites get invaded, two of the three sites were breached. Just, you know, that, that becomes, you know, one site more than once with squallers and illegal uses, et cetera. So there's just this additional complexity factor associated with them.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your, your responses, both of your responses. I, I also acknowledge the real constraints that you're working within, so thank you for that. I, I would appreciate anything in writing that you can share with us just to understand how those costs play out in your larger pro forma, just for us to understand, again, what you are sharing, hinting to us and showing us that is simply not feasible. So that is just useful for, information for us and anything that you can provide, I would appreciate it. Just one final follow-up. I asked specifically whether the carbon neutrality, the, the incentives within the carbon neutrality to the of Yes were considered and I'm wondering if there's anything that you can say about that specifically, the ultra-low energy definition as it regards to passive house? Again, given the scale of the buildings.
We can, we can, we can submit something in writing to that, but, you know, I, I just, just wanted to add, it was interesting, the project that came before us in the Bronx had the same number of units, but it was a single site and it's also NCP. And I looked at it and I thought, boy, I wish we were doing that. That's easy. And, you know, we're, I don't know what the total budget was for the project in the Bronx, but, you know, we're easily north of $700,000 per unit where the land is at no cost. The land's being contributed here at $1 per lot. So, you know, that's just, you know, something else to bear in mind.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Let me move on to Commissioner Remperchad.
Sorry. Hello, Michelle. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Just one quick question. What is the projected timeline for all three of these projects?
Sure. I could speak to that. So, well, we would like to break ground one year from today. We would like to build the three sites simultaneously and it would take 24 months to, to do so. So that means, you know, we would be ready for lease-up and occupancy in 2028. You know, so these, these three sites, they're, they're small, they're not viable to develop on a standalone basis and certainly not like the Mother Gaston site. The way they become viable is to group them together into a package and to develop them under, with one contract. Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner, that's it? Good? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. We're going to close the hearing on calendars 15, 16, 17. We appreciate your time and attention to this one. And Madam Secretary, let's, let's move on to the next.
Thank you, Chair. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number 18, New York Community Hospital of Brooklyn, CD14, C180070 MMK, public hearing in the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning New York Community Hospital of Brooklyn.
Great. Thank you. I see signed up here Richard Lobel, Amanda Ianadi, Ismael Fontanes and Maxim Gladke. I believe that this, this group may be part of the applicant team together, but let's, let's get started, Mr. Lobel, whenever you are ready.
Commissioners Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel PC for the applicant. So we're pleased today to bring the New York Community Hospital demapping before the Commission. Next slide, please. What this project would allow would be for a demapping of an 11-foot, 11.7-foot wide portion of the southerly side of Avenue O and a triangular portion of the intersection of Avenue O and King's Highway. This portion is currently improved with a sidewalk and it contains an enclosed ramp which provides handicap access to the hospital, which is permitted pursuant to DOT revocable consent. So should this demapping be approved, the sidewalk easement would be granted to DOT, NYCH would gain ownership of that portion of the property. And in addition, a triangular portion at the end of the street would also be within NYCH property and would allow for the building of this infectious disease isolation unit. This IDIU is being built pursuant to New York State Department of Health requirements that require such IDIU's to be built for community hospitals. The next slide is the area map, which shows the area surrounding the demapped area. So you can see in the dotted line is the area of NYCH. And there's an additional map which is included on the next slide, which particularly shows the area of the demapping. If you can go to the next slide, please. So this shows the portion of the demapping. You can see that on the bottom of the map, there's a highlighted area, it looks like a half an arrow. So that linear area currently has the NYCH ramp and handicap access to the site as well as the triangular portion or half triangle towards the end. And that would house the independent IDIU. This would be a three-story building which would allow for establishment of a freestanding building to, in order to process any infectious disease patients. Currently, the infectious disease unit is required to incorporate potential patients through the emergency room, which presents a very high risk in terms of spreading of disease. This would allow for those patients to go to their own area, allow for observation and treatment if necessary. The next slide shows pictures of the site, which shows first the triangular portion of the, at the end of the property, which would be used to house the three-story 1,500 square foot building. And then you can see, again, if you want to advance through the photos, pictures of the ramp access currently located, keep going, on city property, which would now- the ramp access currently located, keep going, on city property, which would now of course be part of the hospital. As we conclude our three minute presentation, the remaining slides show plans demonstrating as discussed, the one story ground, the one story portion on the ground floor with the observation room and treatment and the additional space above. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lobel, you got it right on the mark. Let me just post two questions together and, and then I'll go to my colleagues. The first is, can you just say a little bit more about the need for this use on this particular space as opposed to anywhere else in the existing structure, one? And two, whether there is any precedential concerns that we should be considering or be concerned about in relation to, you know, enabling a demapping for, for this purpose?
Sure. So as to the first question, the hospital itself is built fully in terms of available floor area. And in addition to that, is subject to BSA variances, which have been granted several times over the years since 1950. So the hospital is currently out of space and is indeed, you know, indeed their existing space is insufficient for really what they're trying to do. To allow them to demap this portion of Avenue O, which currently it does not even have public access, this triangular portion is fenced off and then there's the, there's the handicap ramp. To allow them to do that will allow for this freestanding structure, which can't be placed anywhere else on the property and allow for this type of isolation, which is medically necessary for these type of patients. The second thing in terms of precedent, the second discussion, really to allow for this type of, of demapping is really warranted, given the fact that the current lot area devoted to the ramp is itself the subject of a revocable consent. So really, this is a change in ownership of the, of the property that would currently be used for the, for the same purpose, merely allows the, the hospital to go forward with their plans and allow access to this IDIU without concern of, of the city coming in and saying, we're going to need to take this land back. It allows them to, to use this land for this specific purpose with the additional benefit share of an easement being granted back to the city and back to DOT to allow for public use of this ramp access area anyway. So I think it's, in terms of precedent, really there's not a lot of comparable situations to allow something so clearly for the public good and also one which will provide the same access to the public on a going forward basis.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Lobel. We, before you go though, let me just confirm that the other folks that I called out were in fact, part of your group.
Correct, they're here for answering questions.
Thank you, Amanda Ianati, Ismael Fontanaz and Maxim Gladke, yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me see if there's anybody else who wishes to be heard on calendar 18. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing on this item and let's move on to the next, Madam Secretary.
Borough of Queens, calendar number 19 and 20, Queens Future Map Change and Amendment, CD16, calendar, calendar number 15, C 250046 ZMQ, calendar number 16, C 250047 MMQ, public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment and city map amendment concerning Queens Future Map Change and Amendment. The public hearing is being held by the City Planning Commission in conjunction with the above action to receive comments related to a draft environmental impact statement. This hearing is being held pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and the City Environmental Quality Review.
Wonderful, thank you, Madam Secretary. Let me introduce, introduce a rather significant applicant team here, so give me a moment. We have David Karnofsky, we have Jalisa Ferreras Copeland who's standing at the podium, welcome. Greg Pasquarelli, David Quartz, Michael Sullivan, Roberto Otero, Paul Pelizari, Sean Cafferty, James Henenhoist, Michael Sullivan, Sean Caffery.
You said it.
Did I say that already? Yeah, now in the second round, that's why it looks so significant. I mean, it's significant, but it was not double. Okay, all right, let's see. Did I do, did I note Karen Wang?
No.
Paralina Bustamante and Eduardo Valentin.
I think those are part of our public speaking.
Oh, they are, okay, they're listed as part of the applicant team. Okay, you know what, let's just stop right there before we get ourselves into any more problems and Ms. Ferreras Copeland, so good to see you, welcome.
See you as well.
And whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners, I'm Jalisa Ferreras Copeland representing Queens Future LLC, a partnership between Steve Cohen, owner of the New York Mets and Hard Rock International. I'm joined by my colleagues Greg Pasquarelli of Shop Architects and David Karnofsky of Freed Frank to present our project Metropolitan Park, along with the necessary mapping actions. In 2013, a majority of New York state voters approved a referendum to legalize three downstate gaming facilities. Metropolitan Park is pursuing a gaming license and our application is dependent on securing these licenses. The site of our mapping action is situated in the parking lots surrounding City Field in Queens. In my 15 years of government experience, I have never encountered a project with this level of community support. We have secured the approvals of all six community boards after 14 long, robust meetings and many hours of engagement. As well as from the Queens Borough President. This site is owned by New York City and a 99 year commercial lease is held by the New York Mets owner Steve Cohen until 2105. It is currently over 50 acres of asphalt provided for service parking. Although this area was mapped as parkland by Parks Commissioner Robert Moses during its entire existence, it has only ever been a swamp, a garbage dump and then a parking lot. First for the World's Fair and later to service Shea Stadium and City Field, it has never been a public park. I served in the city council from 2009 into 2017 representing this area. I'm honored to lead the community engagement for Queens Future overseeing a four year effort to gather input that shaped the design of Metropolitan Park. What we heard from the community was a deep desire for both creating jobs and expanding open space. All these ideas were given to our next presenter, Greg Pasquarelli, who will explain how his team designed a plan that would reflect all these community priorities.
Thank you Jalisa, and it's very nice to be here, honored to be here again in front of the commissions, good to see all of you. When we started to look at this project, it was, we saw it as an incredible opportunity. What you see here is the original plan by Robert Moses, which was swampland and then land that was acquired through redlining. And you could see that the original design for the 39 World's Fair was to drive the park up towards the bay. As Robert Moses was wont to do, he used that parkland and those redlining tactics to drive highways and expressways through those lands. And if you see by the 1980s, you could see below in the, in the center one during the 39 World's Fair, you could see the parking lots as they existed. And then as you got to the current condition after the construction of Shea Stadium, you could see that the four highways literally severed the park from the surrounding neighborhoods. So when we started to think about this, we thought about the natural beauty there, we thought about the architectural heritage, but we really thought to ourselves, how many times do you have the opportunity to right the wrongs of Robert Moses? And that was the driving force behind everything that we tried to do here, pushing the park across, reconnecting to the neighborhoods and reconnecting to the waterfront. In these gestural elements of the way the park was designed, it ended up giving us a lot of flatiron kind of shapes where buildings would go. We started with Abbott's Field, which is the inspiration for City Field. We looked at flatiron buildings around, around the city and thought about a building that was very connected to New York's DNA. We looked at the World's Fair legacy and the civic nature of those buildings and thought, and our clients who have been fantastic working with the Mets and with Hard Rock, talking about a civic building, not a building that looks like it was taken from somewhere else and dropped in the city of New York. We looked at the 64 World's Fair and then here you could see the plan. A is the major part of the park that cuts through from the passerelle through the transit station at C and connects you directly up to the waterfront. So there's 25 acres of new open park. B is the integrated resort. You could see the series of hotels, those white boxes towards the west. We tried to push the garages out close to the highways so that it would have the least amount of impact on the communities. And then you could see C is the new transit station, D at the bottom is new ball fields along the southern parking lots. And then G in the middle is a new food hall. So we thought the best way to show this in our short amount of time was a bunch of, a series of before and afters. You could see the 50 acres of asphalt and working with field operations, James Corner Field Ops is our landscape architect, to finally put a park on this site, a 25 acre park. So you could see City Field on the right, you could see the integrated resort on the left. It has to be brought up out of the floodplain because the floodplain has changed in this location. There's parking underneath it, the park berms up to a kind of civic nature podium. And then instead of a, a single large building, we did a skyline of the hotels. They're placed in a position that is more than 800 feet away across the Grand Central from any residential areas, but pushed back from the park to put the least amount of shadows on the public open space. For those of you who've ever been to the seven station there, it's not the greatest station in the world, it's pretty tricky, it's pretty tough, it's, it's not ADA accessible. And so the first thing that we want to do is make an outside the fair zone connection through the stadium, through the, through the station and out to the stadium and the integrated resort. And then here, looking back at the station, there would be a completely revamped station with elevators, ramps, making it fully ADA accessible and connecting it directly to the passerelle and Flushing Meadow Corona Park. This is looking towards the east, you can see the stadium. The park also goes to the east and connects to the new soccer stadium that's being built, the new affordable housing community at Willet's Point. And then there'll be a large, what we're calling the Taste of Queens Food Hall, right there when you get off of the, off of the seven train. This is now looking again, sort of at the center of the 25 acres of asphalt and that's the before. And here you can see being in the center of this absolutely incredible world-class phenomenal public park. This is looking sort of back from Willet's Point towards Seven Station. So you could see the, the food hall on the left, you could see the ramps and the hills and the berms that bring everything up out of the flood zone, City Field on the right and the integrated resort in front of you. And then also, one of the things we really heard from the community was the ability to walk there. Roosevelt Avenue now, it's pretty dark, the sidewalks are broken, it's pretty tricky to get there. So many things that we heard, separated bike lanes, widened sidewalks, great lighting and all kinds of athletic playing fields and playgrounds and parks along that way so that you can get from Corona or Flushing to the site through pedestrian access. And then on the South Field Lots, just to the south of the seven line, this is where we put most of the athletic fields and courts and playing areas so that they're closest to the community. One of the key issues that we have is some of the traffic, traffic issues. Most of those are caused because everyone comes in the 30 minutes before the game and leaves in the 30 minutes after the game because there's nothing to do there. A lot of it has to do with dangerous conflicts between pedestrians and automobiles and a lot of it has to do with some of those roads are actually remnants from the 39 World's Fair. So there's inefficient access. And the new plan basically strategically locates the parking garages, the new structured parking, right near the highway entrances. And the drop off for the integrated resort is on the Grand Central Parkway side. And then the idea is that the entire center part of the, of the site becomes pedestrian only in the park. So you're really separating the traffic, we're building new pedestrian bridges, new bicycle bridges, new bike lanes, we're improving Shea Road, we're improving the MTA station and new street crossings and sidewalks all the way around to really fix the area. All of the garages have solar panels on them, prioritizing mass transit, the trees and vegetations, you know, all, all locally, what, what we want to have here, we've got a green roof for filtration and water reuse and detention for the irrigation of the park. And I'm going to turn it over to David, please. Yes.
Good morning, I'm David Karnofsky from Freed Frank, it's nice to be here, nice to be back. I'm going to describe the land use actions briefly. The applicant is requesting approval of two land use actions, first the city map change and second the city zoning map amendment. These actions would facilitate the project that Greg just described to you. The city map change has four interrelated components, which I'll describe in turn.
David, that's it. So we're going to ask you about them because obviously this is really why we're here. So let me, let me start though, but, well, you know, it may be easier just for you to go, go do it, those were all my questions anyway about the, the mapping, the mapping of streets and the, and parks and the zoning map amendment, so why don't you walk us through and I'll do my follow up.
Sure, thank you. Today, the site is mapped as parkland shown in dark blue and it's bordered by, on the west by the Grand Central Parkway, which is mapped as street. The first layer of the city map change is park demapping. The park areas to be demapped, which are shown in light blue, correspond first to the footprint of the entertainment complex as well as ramps that lead to and from the entertainment complex. Those ramps cross over Shea Road, which is a park road and you can see an area shown in lighter color, which reflects volumes of the ramps that will be above air and will be demapped above a lower limiting plane, that's what that is. The second area to be demapped is a footprint of a new exit ramp to the Grand Central Parkway, proposed as one of the project's roadway improvements. And we can discuss more of that later. The remaining portions of the site, and this is important, including all of the improved public open spaces, will remain as mapped parkland. The second layer here has to do with demapping of streets, demapping of two open areas of the Grand Central Parkway. First, a demapping of an area that corresponds to a portion of the ramp that will lead to the entertainment center, that's shown in the southwest corner at the bottom. And second, the demapping of an area that corresponds to a portion of one of the planned open spaces, shown in the northwest corner. So this is demapping as street. The third layer is a mapping of streets, a mapping of streets. The proposed new ramp that I just mentioned to the Grand Central Parkway, which would be demapped as park, would then be remapped as street to allow it to become part of the highway system. And finally, the portion of the Grand Central Parkway that I just mentioned as being demapped as street would then be mapped as park to form part of a new park complex under the project. And secondly, of course, there's the zoning map amendment, which provides a zoning district to the demapped area of the entertainment complex. We propose a C 84 district, which is one of the districts where a state licensed gaming facility is a permitted use under the citywide gaming facility text amendment. Together, the city map change and the zoning map change will allow us to move forward to the state, into the state process with a project that is eligible also for the benefits of the citywide zoning text amendment. So those are the two actions in summary.
Great.
And that is the end of our presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Karnofsky. Let me, let me just start with a few follow ups there. So, starting with the parkland, there's demapping of parkland, there's mapping of parkland, but all in the context of what Ms. Ferreras Copeland noted at the beginning where it's not actually a park today, it's been a dump and a parking lot and other things. What is the, so it's a demapping of 25.11 acres and a remapping of .77 or mapping of .77. So it's a loss of, you know, 24 or so acres of technical parkland. What is the actual gain or loss of park space in this application? Because the technical, technically speaking, it is a loss on paper, but, but obviously there's, there's a park that's being introduced here.
I would agree that it's in the most technical sense that there's a loss, not a real loss because we're talking about a current situation in which there is no parkland in this area.
Correct.
There's only asphalt. So in terms of the increase in actual usable public open space, there is approximately 25 acres. And that's a function of the areas between the entertainment center and the City Field complex that will be redeveloped as actual parkland with all of the amenities that one would expect in a high first class park, as well as south of Roosevelt Avenue, an area for active recreation. Together, that's 25 acres.
Okay, so it's a technical loss of roughly 25, but an actual gain of about 25, I think for argument's sake here.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Let's talk about the map. Let's talk about the mapping of the streets. If you could pull that one back up again.
Yeah.
So the, the mapping of the streets of those two yellow slivers.
Yes.
Tell us what the, the situation is today.
Right.
One of, I know the southern one is park, actually, they're both within the, within parkland, correct?
The southern one, well, yes. The, the street that's shown in yellow, the street mapping that's shown in yellow is in an area that is currently in parkland. And there's a corresponding de-mapping of park for those two linear.
Got it. And what is actually there? So it's, it's technically park as so much of this is, but what's actually there?
Well, in the Marina area to the north, the area that is being de-mapped as park and mapped as street really just clips a parking lot. It is not used for active recreation purposes. It is functioning on the edge of a parking lot and will not affect the usability of the Marina area for, for recreation. And to the south, on the southern side of the Whitestone, similarly, it's not an access, it's not an area that's typically accessed by the public, although it is green. It's an open area, but it's not really used for recreational purposes today.
Okay. On the map amendment, this area does not have a zoning designation today. Is that correct?
There is a, that is correct, yes.
So the proposal is for C-84. Can you just spend a moment explaining what the rationale is for that particular?
Right. So you, you may recall that the citywide zoning text.
I do.
Set forth.
I do.
A number of, we all do. Set forth a number of districts in which a licensed gaming facility would be permissible from a use perspective and from a bulk perspective. C-84 is one of them. We chose it because it was one of them for first and foremost. And secondly, because in very, very general terms from an FAR perspective, it fits. The FAR for the C-84 is five. Our calculation of a FAR, although this is not really based on floor area in terms of what we will show the state, rather growth, is within that envelope. So those are the two reasons.
Okay. Got it. And then my last question before I go to my colleagues is, on that, the dramatic slide which showed the new connection to the subway. I certainly agree that that is an entrance which needs some love. But talk to us about how that fits into this actual application, what the conversations have been with, with the MTA, who is anticipated to do that work? Just give us a little bit more detail about how that is to come to be.
I'll give you a very general description. And if there are follow on questions, there may be others here who can answer better. But basically, this is an undertaking of the joint venture to design and build these improvements. It is part of the obligation that would be taken on and accepted as part of the license application. And discussions with the MTA have been ongoing, very fruitful. And at this point, the MTA is actually reviewing materials, plans, drawings, and we're moving forward with this work.
Is there, there's a, there's a grade change in the middle of this site from the spot where the, where City Field is and where the gaming facility exists? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. So because now the floodplain is 14 feet up. And so the way that we've designed the building is that there's, the parking lot is there and then you build a layer of parking and then the ground plane of the entertainment facility. So it's almost 20 feet up.
And the, the food hall, I guess this is Site B?
Yes.
Site B is at the higher level?
Yes.
And the connection to the subway today is at a?
Is at that same height.
It's at the hi, it's at that higher level?
Yes, the right here. So basically, on the, the way that the subway would be renovated is that you would come off the platforms to the mezzanine level below, which would go directly out. And the, the food hall is directly to the right. Directly to the left, you can take pedestrian bridges straight across to the entry. Or there'll be ramps and staircases and elevators that will take you down to, to the rotunda of City Field.
Okay. Okay. I got it. Okay. Thank you. Let me see who has questions. Okay, I'll start with the vice chairman.
Thank you. David, you still, thank you.
I might step back though.
No, I just wanted to clarify, or confirm, I guess, what I call the 25 for 25.
Yeah.
The 25 acres, and we know this has been a de facto parking lot, but when you de-mapped parkland, you have to replace it. Is that correct?
You know, you replace it or you invest in parkland?
Right. So in this instance, the 25 replaced, uh, uh, de-mapped acres is being, albeit fragmented, but it's being replaced acre for acre?
Well, I, I think we're focusing on the fact that we are investing in 25 acres of new parkland throughout the site.
So just identify for me briefly where, where, where they are.
If you see all the green areas north of Roosevelt, for starters.
Right.
The central space is labeled A.
Right.
But there are a series of other spaces surrounding the site as well. For example, there's, you see also labeled what's called Pork Chop Hill to the upper, in the upper left hand corner, which is also park.
Right.
And it's an area where we're going to actually add to the parkland through mapping of park space. So in total, there's about 20 odd acres in north of Roosevelt. Then to the south, you have active recreation spaces that will be created. So altogether, that's your, that's your 25, 25.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Rampershead?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Add a couple of quick questions, and some of them are based on the Borough President's recommendations here. Number one, can you just walk us through this community advisory board? How would it work? Who's it made of in terms of members?
We'll have Michael Sullivan come up.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Michael Sullivan Sully. I'm Steve Cohen's Chief of Staff. It's a pleasure to be for, be before you. Thank you for your time.
Usually say that to us.
It's a total pleasure. Thank you. We've created $163 million community benefit fund. We are still working on the details of it with our local elected officials. There won't be government officials or elected officials serving on this board. It will be community members from Queens. Through the process of going through our six community boards, we specifically committed to having representation from the two community board areas closest to us. The members cannot be members, a member of a nonprofit that'll get funding. So you can't give yourself money. You can't sit on the board and give yourself money. And we won't have government officials or community board members actually on that board. There'll be a selection process. And we're going to retain the right to do due diligence on any group that we're giving a grant to, to make sure that the programmatic giving of the group is sufficient. We don't have too much money going to overhead and that they're reputable and upstanding folks. We have several large charitable foundations that we operate today. The Cohen family's given away over a billion dollars since I started working for them 18 years ago. We do this all the time, every day. You know, it's important work and I think we do it very well in terms of doing our due diligence to make sure that these dollars are going to the appropriate groups that need and want those funds. And we've committed to have those funds go to the neighborhoods around us in Queens.
Right. Appreciate that. One follow up question. With regards to the $320 million commitment to the creation of 25 acre park, do you feel that number is going to change or fluctuate in terms of, is that enough money allocated for the development of this park?
Yeah, so it's a minimum. I mean, we're, we're committed to delivering this new 25 acre park. We have to build it to park department specifications. So whatever it ends up being, it'll end up being, based on our best guess in terms of our budgeting, that's what we've penciled in. Initially, this was a billion dollar community benefit package all in. It's more than that now. You know, just with the passage of time, it's probably 1.1 or more. But we're committing to deliver that park and we're committing to deliver that park and the MTA station improvements and these other benefits as part of our application. So it's part of what we're submitting to the state and it's something that the Gaming Commission will ultimately hold us to delivering as part of the license.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin?
Hi, how are you today?
Good morning, maybe good afternoon at this.
I have a couple of questions for you. And the first is building on Commissioner Rampershead's, which is about the CBA. Now, I know we're not approving the CBA and the city has no involvement in the CBA. And whether it happens or doesn't happen has nothing to do with these land use changes, although the community is clearly expecting them to happen. So I feel the need to ask a few questions to make sure that the community will in fact receive what they believe they have agreed to. What is the legal form this will take, this agreement?
Sure. So we've committed to this in writing, obviously, to our community boards and the Borough President. But we're also submitting this community benefit package as part of our application in the RFA, the Request for Application to the State Gaming Commission on June 27th of this upcoming year. So it goes in as part of our application, as does the Taste of Queens Food Hall, as does the MTA renovations, as does the 25 acre park, as part of the overall project that we're submitting. That's our bid that they'll be considering. And if we're approved, we're obligated to deliver what we've committed to as part of that RFA. So the enforcement mechanism is really that RFA submittal to the State Gaming Commission.
And who enforces that?
The State Gaming Commission. And our, our license is predicated on delivering. So in other words, we can't get the license to open the doors to the facility. We have a performance bond that the state's going to require. So we can't get our license to operate ultimately unless we fulfill the obligations we've made under this RFA submittal.
Can the CAC or the State Gaming Commission change those? I mean, if they decided that they didn't like all of the active open space being south of Roosevelt and they wanted more north, can they do that?
So we've engaged with all of our CAC members over the past four years, you know, including our new CAC member coming in, our new elected Assembly member. So we've gotten a lot of input over the last four years from the community in terms of what they'd like to see here. There are some small changes that we continue to make along the way to respond to community concerns and we'll continue to do that. We continue to listen. So we're continuing to engage in the community. If there's ways that we can improve this, we'll continue to do that and we'll engage in the CAC process to listen very carefully. We'll have public hearings this coming summer, obviously, as part of this process. But ultimately, what we end up submitting on June 27th is, is a minimum we're committing to, to the State Gaming Commission in terms of what we're promising to deliver as part of our bid.
But it could be different if other entities in the approval process want changes.
So the Gaming Commission has allowed for, if there's changes that are required because of land use or other issues, if you need to make tweaks to what you've proposed, that they do allow some leeway to do that. But we're not going to be able to withdraw any of these commitments we've made once we submit that RFA.
What if you can't get a performance bond for them all?
We can't, we, we won't be eligible. As, as part of the project, we have to arrange financing. We have to have, you know, confidence letters from banks. We have to, we have to be able to perform on all the requirements of the RFA or we're not going to be able to win a license.
And where are you in the state alienation process?
Yes.
Is, are there Assembly people and state senators who have the bill ready and are submitting it to this session?
Yeah. I, I've learned to never speak for an, an elected official. I can tell you our new local Assembly member has publicly said that she'll be submitting this bill early this session. We have this legislative session, basically, to address this permitted use bill, to add to the permitted uses of the land and deal with the issues that we need to deal with in Albany. So we need to get that bill done this legislative session and it's our plan to do so.
And does it need a home rule message?
If it's, if it's specific to our site, it would, yes.
And when do you envision all of that coming together?
Over the next six months. By, by, by June.
By June 27th?
Yes. 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 I, we didn't create the timeline or the process. We're, you know, doing our best to, you know, follow what's been laid out. And, you know, it's, it's been a lot of work. It's been a lot of community board members' meetings, but they've gone incredibly well. And what you see here today is dramatically better because of that input we got. It's really truly been a ground up process. And we couldn't have done this with, without Jelisa's help to make sure we were reaching out to the right groups and members. We've done over 1,000 meetings now in our local community. And the reason we have this beautiful project to present to you is really because of that input and the way Greg and his team have been able to transform it into something beautiful.
Speaking of Greg, my last question, how much of the open space that's being created is active and how much is passive? I mean, I commend you on the Domino Open Space, which is the best open space we've seen in a long time in the city. So I expect to see something amazing here too. But if you could tell me how much is, that little piece seems so much smaller than the 20 acres, the piece to the south of?
The D, letter D, that area?
Yes.
So that's five acres. So again, we're working together. It's the same team that brought you Domino Park, Shop Architects and Field Operations.
I give you an opportunity to sing your praises.
I appreciate that very much. And just that D area?
Right.
Is twice the size of Domino Park.
But it's also one less than a quarter of all of the open spaces. That, is there other open space that is closer to the Marina or underneath or around the highway? Or is it just that space south of?
That's active? No, there'll be active areas throughout the park. There'll be both passive and active throughout the park. And we've been doing this in conjunction with the community board input. Also, one thing that, that is maybe not that clear, if you see, the park also heads to the east, ending at that letter F.
Yeah.
Which is an open plaza. And that was really part of it, knowing that soccer was going to be attracting a lot of people and the new neighborhood to the east in Willets Point. And so we wanted a big portion of the park to go in that direction as well, so that people walking home don't have to walk under the L on the seven train, but can walk through a park. So the park actually really stretches in many directions and helps connect and bring those neighborhoods back together. The, the exact percentage, I can get you that number of active versus passive?
I would appreciate that because as you know, the park is one of the most heavily used parks in the city.
Yes.
There is not enough space for all the people who want to use it and who use it for active. I mean, any place you go in the park, you'll see people playing soccer, you'll see people doing all sorts of flag football. Everybody is playing there and there's not enough space. So I want to make sure that in this design, we've incorporated enough space for those kinds of very active playing and games and not at the expense of the Passerelle site where people will, if forced, they will just turn it into a soccer field.
Understood. And it's an excellent point. And as you said, it's something that we're working with the community on. We've gotten incredible input. For example, a sensory playground for children with autism. There were areas for seniors. But we, we do know how heavily used Flushing Meadows Corona Park is, and we absolutely see this as a natural extension of that to the, to the bay.
And will there be any interaction with the water and the waterfront as the park goes up to the Marina?
We're looking at, at repairing and improving the underpass under the Whitestone with new lighting, new sidewalks. We've got new bike lanes. There's a pedestrian bridge that gets you over there. One of the main drivers of traffic is the interference between automobile and pedestrians trying to get to the Marina parking lots. So the police have to stop the cars getting out of the shape, out of the City Field parking lots all the time. You can tell how old I am. And so by separating those, having pedestrian bridges and all these connections, we think it will much more strongly tie the waterfront to the park as a whole.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks so much for the presentation. I, I wanted to build on Commissioner Benjamin's question on the open space with more, more, more directly on the resiliency measurements. So thanks so much for the references, both in the materials and in the presentation. I just wanted to confirm a couple of things. First, the first occupiable floor is above base floor innovation, actually way above the requirement. I commend you for that. But I just wanted to confirm, everything below? I just wanted to confirm, everything below that is either parking or loading. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And what about the open spaces themselves? Like, how are you anticipating to protect them?
Well, the open spaces, there are berms, there are retention tanks underneath. We're improving the infrastructure from, everything from sewers and drainage, but also just the green areas themselves are much more resilient for when there is flooding. So, as a total package, we think it will really help the area which now continuously floods. And James?
Hi. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is James Tenahy. I'm with Field Operations, designing the public realm component of the project. That's primarily the green figure that you see on the map there. To the Commissioner's question about how are we designing the park in relation to the fact that it's in a floodplain, that's actually intentional. It's meant to be part of the floodable, and it will be designed in, following the New York City Resiliency Guidelines for Parks in floodplains. It's actually a great response to designing a floodplain. It's replacing an otherwise impermeable surface with permeable tissues, living plants, living trees, that will be able to soak up the water and allow water to return down to the, to the earth. Surfaces allowed here will be draining towards these living gardens and plants, allowing for natural transfer, or evapotranspiration. Surfaces will be designed to be resilient and allow for floodwaters to recede with minimal risk and damage to buildings and people.
Thank you. I commend you on that, and I appreciate also your references to the heat, urban heat island effect. But I guess, the one specific question, we, you have something like that, and you can share with us. I'm specifically interested in understanding, how high is the water table here? Because you're heavily reliant on, on the permeability, and I'm wondering, you know, how are you, what is the, what are the existing conditions in that regard?
Yeah, we, I think, we probably share a section at some point
Yeah.
that identifies the different levels of the buildings and the, the open spaces. We're relying on, we're not necessarily relying on permeability. That's one of the strategies, the fact that it allows for, you know, it's, it's a low-risk space during a flood event and will return to its normal public realm capacity after a flood event. That's, that's the strategy there.
Fair enough.
And one other thing, one other thing I can add is that we are not digging down in any way, and the entire project is pile-supported. So, everything is coming up from the location that it is today.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and would appreciate anything that you can submit in writing. I have another question, and thank you again for, in the previous responses, addressing some of the unavoidable significant impacts on transportation. I, I wanted to also ask about the impacts on sewer and water infrastructure. The, in, in looking at the materials, it sounds like the, so far, the process has identified significant adverse impacts on the 24-inch sewer and the capacity of the 37th Avenue Pump Station. And so, in the review session, we, we started the conversation, and it sounds like we may not have mitigation strategies identified already. But I just wanted to give you a chance to share with us, kind of like, the status of your thinking in that regard. I say that, acknowledging that, you know, these are just sort of like, you know, we're, we're in the middle of the process, and, and probably, sort of like, this is going to take longer than expected. But I'm just, I want to respect and elevate the WRP, which in this case requires us to guarantee that we're protecting the special natural waterfront area, the Flushing Meadows, as NWA, as much as possible. And so, in the WRP, you state that you're doing so. And I just want to understand, you know, how, how are you sort of like balancing both?
Hi, everyone. I'm David Quirt from VHB. We prepared the EIS for the project. Good to see you all. I guess, just to start, in terms of water and sewer, Commissioner, just to be clear, the draft EIS states that there is the potential for a significant adverse impact with some additional analysis and work to be done between the draft and final EIS. And so, we are currently working with the Mayor's Office of Environmental Coordination and with DEP on that point. And so, so we're still working through that. I will say that in the work that we have been doing, at this, at this moment, we of course need DEP approval of this and consensus on it, but we are not finding that there would be a significant impact. We have found that there is capacity in the 24-inch main, and no appreciable, appreciable, really, increase into the, into the pump station itself. So, at this moment, that's, that's where we are, and obviously, we'll keep you closely posted as we move toward publication of the final EIS.
Thank you.
In terms of, I mean, I think in terms of the special, you know, the natural area, I think it's really some of the things that James just spoke to that, you know, are, that really emphasize how our design has been most sensitive to, you know, to the, to the environment of the immediate site and, and what surrounds it.
One quick, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Just one quick follow-up. On page 23 of the unavoidable significant adverse impacts, the document, this does, this does state that if it is confirmed that the flow levels with, with, with action condition would exceed the operating capacity, then, then the mitigation action would be triggered. Do you, when do you expect at least to know whether that would be the case? I understand that the mitigation option will require some, if, if it is confirmed, and I thank you for, for the clarification, will take a little longer. I just want to understand, sort of like, when can we expect to know whether that's going to be an actual impact? Again, and the reason why I say this is because we at the Commission will have very little time to review the final, the EIS before we vote.
Understood, Commissioner. I think, I mean, look, at this time, we're, we're in active discussions with DEP and the Mayor's Office. Well, you know, we're, we're doing this, I'm hoping, you know, hoping to have resolution on this the next couple of weeks, to be frank. As I said, you know, at this moment, we, we feel confident as a, as an applicant team that we would not trigger an impact, but obviously, we, we need to hear back from DEP, so we can certainly keep you and the other Commissioners closely posted on the status of that as we move along.
Fair enough. Thank you. If you can share anything as soon as you have it, I would very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Happy to.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold?
Just one broad point of clarification. In looking through the parking, I just want to be sure I have my numbers right. It looks like we are moving out, if we do this, about 7,400 spots, and then replacing that with about 14,000 spots. Are those numbers correct?
Yes, that's, that's about right, exactly.
So, and I guess broadly, just want to know, or want to be sure that we're thinking that even, I recognize that we're doubling it, but we also are potentially adding a casino, potentially adding a hotel with 2,300 rooms, potentially adding a music venue, some office, and some retail. Do we think those numbers are right? Do we think that, basically, that that's enough parking for everything that'll be there?
We do, yes. I mean, in summary, the, you know, the, the parking that's there today for the Mets, the idea is to retain that parking for the Mets, and then to add sufficient parking to accommodate the, the balance of the uses. You know, we've been, of course, coordinating closely with City DOT on this and our, and our parking study, and the 13,750 spaces that is proposed across the different lots is, is sufficient at even, you know, the, the peak hours, sort of in the worst-case conditions to accommodate. And that, and that's really been part of our goal, right? That's part of, part of our, our commitment is to ensure that we're not having vehicles driving through the neighborhoods looking for parking. We want to be sure people can come and go to and from the site as easily as possible without going through the neighborhoods. And to the point Greg made earlier, that's how we've designed this, with the different garages located strategically, so that it is, we can get from and to a garage directly from a highway or arterial roadway.
So, and I guess to add to that, presumably, there'd be active coordination on your end, or on the end of the team of, you know, effectively, music events obviously not happening at the same time as the bowl game, let's say. There's a lot to be said for that, presumably.
Yeah, 100%. So, we've worked out an agreement with a soccer stadium across the street. We'll get the baseball schedule each season first. They'll slot in soccer games when the Mets are away. If for some reason we get rained out, they have to move the time of the soccer game, so we don't conflict there. And then, in terms of the programming, you know, if we're expecting a sold-out game at Cityfield, we're not doing a concert on top of that inside the music theater. And so, we've got to de-conflict these things. We want everybody to have a great guest and fan experience, or they're not going to want to come back. And so, both because of the agreements that we've worked out with soccer and how we're going to program things, we're going to de-conflict large events.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any last questions here before we go to public testimony? One, it's going twice. Okay. Thank you all very much. We appreciate your, your time and your presentation. Let us move to the public testimony portion of Calendar 19 and 20, and move to Jorge Morales on Zoom, followed by Katie Walls and Rebecca Pryor, all on Zoom. So, Mr. Morales, whenever you're ready, you have three minutes.
Hello, do you hear me?
You can.
Oh, perfect. All right. So, good morning. My name is Jorge Morales. I'm a lifetime resident here at Jackson Heights, New York. I'm a member of 89 Street Tenants Unidos Association. Thank you so much for having me testify, and this is like a perfect opportunity. I'm just recently came back from the Army. I served three years. I was a 19 Delta Cavalry Scout. I got out as a E4. That was my rank. I'm talking on behalf of 500 residents, over 200 families that are working and going to school currently, and cannot attend this meeting. The, before the Army, I, my apartment building was on fire. I lost everything. I'm still living paycheck to paycheck, and I really do not think this casino and what you guys are doing with the environment of Flushing is a great idea. I have many friends that served with, that are from originally California and moved from California to different states like Florida, Texas. They all left because of the casino that was built in Vegas. We mostly talked about our situations back, our states, and the issue of homelessness, you know, the problem with drugs as well. We got to think about our community, like the lights and all the noises that our casino would cause, all the traffic, high congestion prices. I really think it's a bad idea. You guys are sadly just going to hurt the community even more with betting the little money they have. I really wish we could do so much better. And, yeah, like, I serve my country. Appreciate all that you guys have done. I just wish we could do so much better with our resources and for our mental health. That's the main thing. Thank you so much for hearing me out, and I see your little timer. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Morales, and thank you for being with us, and thank you for your, your service. We appreciate your, your joining us here today. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move, thank you. Let's move on to Katie Walls and Rebecca Pryor.
Hi, this is Katie Walls. Thanks very much. I'm a Queens resident. I want to say I'm very much against a casino in Queens. I believe that we need a robust displacement study that encompasses all of the community boards included in the ULP process. I also think that the casino would be detrimental to the neighborhood character. We're talking about a huge glass box in what's supposed to be a park. I know that the applicants brought up that, you know, this land hasn't really been used as parkland. It's been a swamp. It's been a parking lot. Just because it hasn't been utilized in the way that it's been zoned for the benefit of the people already living in that neighborhood, doesn't mean that we should turn it into a casino. I think that's a false argument. I also think that the applicants should absorb, be responsible for absorbing 100% of the stormwater in this floodplain area. I also just want to note that I think invoking Robert Moses to justify, like, potentially displacing thousands of working-class New Yorkers and saying that, like, this project of building a casino in this neighborhood will right his wrongs is ludicrous and just like breathtaking, honestly. You know, we're talking about giving this public land to a billionaire to make even more money off the backs of working-class people. I, I, I think it's abhorrent, and I don't think we should have a casino in Queens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rebecca Pryor?
Rebecca Pryor? Hi, I'm here.
Hello.
Hi, I'll start. Thank you to the Commission for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Rebecca Pryor, and I'm with the Guardians of Flushing Bay. So, the Commission is reviewing a proposal for a ULP application as well as the DEIS that allows for a 3.7 million square foot redevelopment project that essentially privatizes 77 acres of public parkland. The project includes a hotel, convention center, and casino. It's built in a former, it's built in a floodplain and a former wetland. It doesn't capture 100% of stormwater that falls on site despite being in the middle of multiple environmental justice communities that experience increased flooding. It increases flow to an overwhelmed sewer system that leads to Flushing Bay, which receives over 2 billion gallons of raw sewage every year, which is more like 5 billion gallons if you consider climate change impacts. And it doubles the amount of parking on the site. After reviewing both the ULP application as well as the DEIS, Guardians believes that the project is, the impacts of the project are so great that we recommend that the Commission oppose the project or vote no unless modified. And I'll list those modifications now. I'm also going to submit written testimony that goes into our comments in a bit more detail. So, the first modification is no unless modified to not alienate parkland. No unless modified to include a robust displacement study that incorporates all of the community boards that were involved in the ULP process. Right now, the displacement study basically adheres to the minimum requirements in SEAKER and looks at a quarter acre around the site. This displacement study involves census tracts that include largely Flushing Bay and Flushing Meadows Corona Park, where there are no residential or commercial tenants. We also recommend that a modification include adhering to some of the recommendations included in the Phoenix Meadows Vision Plan. Some recommendations are to have 100% stormwater capture on site and to have no net loss and no net gain of the parking on the site. We also recommend strongly that there involve a lot of clarity around the impacts to Flushing Bay, and especially in terms of the climate change predictions for increased rainfall and in the context of increased development. It is not acceptable that the applicants have essentially said, "We will figure this out later and let you know after the ULP process has passed." It is critical that we know this information now. And finally, if this project does move forward, we believe there needs to be a locktite and transparent community benefits agreement. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up is Dara Ilowski. Ms. Ilowski, are you here in the room with us? You are. Okay, great. That's okay. Take your time. Sorry.
Thank you. Good, good afternoon. At this point, I'd written morning initially. My name is Dara Ilowski. I'm the New York Staff Attorney at Save the Sound. Save the Sound is a nonprofit organization with a mission to protect and improve the water, land, and air of the entire Long Island Sound region, including Flushing Bay, for, and to promote environmental justice throughout the region for current and future generations. We're also an endorser of the Flushing for Equitable Development and Urban Planning, also in a set, excuse me, Fed Up No Casino Campaign. Um, we're also an endorser of the Flushing for Equitable Development and Urban Planning, also in a set, excuse me, set up, um, no casino campaign. Um, Save the Sound has serious concerns about the adequacy of this draft environmental impact statement and whether it satisfies Seeker's basic purpose to incorporate consideration of environmental factors into government agency decision-making at the earliest possible time. Um, I'll provide a brief overview of our concerns, um, and we will also be submitting written comments where I'll detail these concerns further. First, I'd like to highlight the inadequacy of the public participation opportunities at this critical juncture here, um, looking at the DEIS. As Set Up explained in a request submitted yesterday for a sixty-day extension of the public comment period, this hearing comes immediately following the winter holidays, um, and is being held at ten AM on a weekday, uh, which is an exceptionally difficult time for working people to set aside to come to this kind of hearing. We're very concerned about how this will curtail public participation, um, particularly for a project that clearly has many community concerns and environmental concerns that it's important to hear the public out on. Uh, moving on to the DEIS itself, um, Save the Sound's very concerned about, um, its failure to address several issues raised in Set Up's, um, draft scope of work comments, um, including, as Ms. Pryor mentioned, um, the exacerbation of project impacts from the effects of climate change and cumulative impacts with other reasonably foreseeable development, particularly given that this area's sewer infrastructure is already easily overwhelmed. Further, the DEIS excludes necessary information to allow the public and decision-makers to evaluate project impacts on sewer infrastructure or the adequacy of proposed mitigation measures. Um, this is the same issue that Commissioner Osorio referenced earlier. I'm very glad to hear that, um, brought up and glad to hear it's something the Commission, um, has noted as a deficiency in this DEIS. We need, the public and the decision-makers need to know, uh, what these projects' impacts are now, not when the FEIS comes out, and as Commissioner Osorio noted, when it's perhaps too late to really, um, have any productive dialogue on that. And, uh, we believe that before this project can move forward, um, Queens Future should have to present some kind of assurance, uh, that should mitigation be necessary for these slow impacts. DEP plans to actually do it. Queens Future has no authority to say that these, that these improvements will actually happen. Thank you so much.
Good. Thank you very much. Um, we appreciate your being here. I will note that there will be a process for people to submit testimony if they are unable to join us this morning. We'll cite that for ease of reference for those who are watching at the end of the hearing, so they can play back if they wish. Uh, and let me move on to Donovan Finn on Zoom, followed by Michael De Valera here in the room.
Hi, this is Donovan Finn. Thank you for your time today. Uh, I'm a resident of Jackson Heights.
Hold one second. We need to adjust your volume for a minute. I don't know if that's your end or ours. Give us a second.
Is that better?
Sir, are you able to adjust your volume for us?
This is better?
Slightly.
Sorry. That's all I can do. One more. How's that?
Okay, go ahead. Let's see, let's, let's start the clock again, Madam Secretary, and, um, Mr. Finn, I think, based on your last comment, I think that may have been loud enough, but go ahead and let's give it a shot.
All right. Thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Donovan Finn. I'm a resident of Jackson Heights, Queens, where I lived for more than twenty years. I'm also an urban planner and an educator, which I've done for too long to count. I'm a longtime advocate for parks and open space in Queens as well. Uh, I just want to say today that I am in full support of this Metropolitan Park proposal, and I want to briefly explain why. Uh, in short, change is hard, uh, but it's also necessary for the health of New York City going forward. A few weeks ago, uh, the new soccer stadium at Willets Point broke ground. Uh, soon, there's going to be a bunch of new housing there. Uh, this part of Queens is changing, and the fact is that change is going to lead to a lot of positive things if we do it right and plan carefully. But in New York City, most large projects, as all of you know, like this are really developed behind the scenes, but the public really only engaged at the end when they can really just kind of, uh, fight for crumbs around the margins. Uh, this process, which I have, uh, seen play out in and around my community, has been very different. It's involved thousands of people. Uh, they can look at the plan, uh, for Metropolitan Park, and they can see their ideas in this, uh, in this plan. This is really refreshing coming from a, you know, someone who has observed the way planning is done in this city for a very long time. And really, I think it should be a model, uh, for future development in the city. As envisioned by the community and the developer, Metropolitan Park can provide a lot of benefits, uh, for future Willets Point residents, for Queens residents in general, for city residents, regional residents, jobs, park space, a renovated transit station, uh, and maybe most importantly, a more climate-ready site. That site today is a climate disaster waiting to happen, uh, and we can have something else, um, if we do the hard work. Cityfield Park lot can be left as it is. That's, that's entirely true, but that's not going to benefit anyone. Uh, and in many ways, it's really causing more harm to the surrounding communities every day, um, because it traps heat, it exacerbates flooding, and it's really just a lifeless void most of the year. The simple fact is this is the first realistic proposal to reimagine the space that has been created since Robert Moses built Shea Stadium. Uh, every time I visit or pass this site, I, I think about the, the failure of imagination that created this site the way it is, and now we have this opportunity to change it, and I think we have to seize it. I think it can provide tangible benefits for myself, my neighbors, the city as a whole, uh, and address a lot of real and important challenges the city faces. Uh, I will note there is no other plan, never has been a plan, and no other plan exists right now that does all of these things and has a funding mechanism attached to them and can actually be built by a competent team. Uh, I think this is an opportunity to add real value to our community, and I think the time for waiting for positive change is over, and I thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Michael De Valera, uh, here with us. Welcome. And we're going to move after to Joanne Yu on Zoom.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Michael De Valera, and I'm proud to serve as a Community Board Three member, a Neighborhood Advisory Board Chair, a small business owner with roots in the area for over fifty years, as well as being the treasurer of Dory Miller Housing Co-op in Corona, Queens, which is the closest property to this proposed development. Like many of you here today, I'm more than just a supporter of the Queens Future Metropolitan Park project. I'm an advocate for what it represents. Let's talk about the facts first. A hundred and sixty-three million committed in community benefits, a four-hundred-and-forty-million-dollar upgrade to the Willets Point train station, finally making it ADA compliant, a twenty-five-acre park where none currently exists. Twenty-three thousand union jobs, construction, sixty-five hundred permanent union jobs once the work is complete. These are real tangible wins for our community. But this project isn't just about numbers. It's about hope. Hope for a neighborhood that's been overlooked, hope for a neighborhood that has been undervalued, and yes, most importantly, hope for a neighborhood redlined from economic prosperity for far too long. Metropolitan Park isn't just another development. This isn't a Steve Cohen or a Mets project or Hard Rock Hotel story. It's a redemption story. A story about how a community comes up together, rolls up its sleeves, and asks to have a seat at the table. And guess what? We heard. We were heard. This project was built with our voices, our input, and our future in mind. Six community boards adjacent to the park voted overwhelmingly in favor of moving this project forward. That is consensus. Take a moment to think about that in this divided world. When was the last time residents of Corona, East Armholst, or Flushing, along with the adjoining communities, had the ability to have input to shape their own narrative? When have we been afforded the ability to have agency over our future? And that's why today isn't just about showing support. It's about believing in what's possible when we work together. It's about owning the future we so richly deserve. So, let's not allow this moment to pass us by. Let's make this vision real. Let's build this development, these jobs, and this future, not just for ourselves, but for the generations to come. I'm asking you, stand with us, support Metropolitan Park, and let's show everyone what happens when a community fights for its dreams. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for being here. Uh, okay, um, Joanne Yu on Zoom, and I'm going to ask, uh, the audience to just keep their reactions, uh, to themselves, or you can do, uh, the jazz hands as we used to do in the City Council. Okay, uh, Ms. Yu, the floor is yours, followed by Alan Sherman here in the room.
Joanne Yu, are you able to unmute in Zoom?
I was going along, and I realize I didn't, I didn't unmy, uh, un silence myself. Thank you. My name is Joanne Yu, and until recently, I served as the Executive Director of a nonprofit organization that has worked with hundreds of Asian-American small businesses in New York City, in particular Flushing, Queens, and the surrounding area. I'm here to present my testimony in support of this project as proposed by Metro Park. While we boast of this, of the borough's diversity and our, and our city's diversity, what has the city proposed to provide jobs to help immigrants and communities of color get on the first rung of the elusive economic ladder and build and strengthen our families' financial futures? Here are the reasons I'm supporting this project. The transportation transformation that will mean increased safety for the area with improved access to mass transportation, more lighting that will encourage pedestrian tri- traffic. The proposed changes will mean increase in public safety, which is one of the most important issues to not just New Yorkers, but to all Americans. There will be tens of thousands of union jobs that will give priority to local residents, good-paying jobs in the hotels and the entertainment value, the food revenue that will give priority to local small businesses to expand their business, especially as small businesses are suffering from lack of opportunities. And finally, I have worked with Sully and the team to make sure that the, some of the profits, as it designated, will go to support local nonprofits and jobs to inject much-needed funding for programs to support the most vulnerable members of our community. Additionally, I continue to engage Metro Park to ensure that communities of color and immigrant businesses get a percentage of the vendor-supplier contracts. During this time, when we're all trying to recover from the economic devastation of COVID that resulted in the loss of thousands of jobs, we have the chance to jumpstart the economy with a transformative, um, just transforming a desolate area with real pipelines to good-paying jobs, community spaces, and meaningful philanthropy. And I ask this Commission to put on their visionary hats to say yes to this opportunity. Um, and I also wanted to say, great to see you, Commissioner Garadnik. It's been a, a while, and we have worked for a very, very long time, and you have been an advocate for the Asian-American community, so it's really great to be able, and an honor to be able to testify here with you. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being with us. Okay, Alan Sherman, followed by Seth Bornstein here in the room. Then over to Bliss Butrago on Zoom. Mr. Sherman, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of the New York City Planning Commission. My name is Alan Sherman, and I have been a resident of Queens since nineteen sixty-three. I have seen many changes in Queens over the years, some good, some bad. I feel Metropolitan Park would be a great addition to Queens County. With the positive approval of the City of Yes, there will be a growth in building within the county. In Willets Point, they are building twenty-five hundred affordable housing units right across the street from Cityfield and Metropolitan Park. These people will need jobs. The Seven subway line is one of the most overcrowded lines in New York City. If you check the numbers, there's not enough room on the train for these people to commute to Manhattan to, for work. What better idea is there than to employ these people as well as other people in Queens at Metropolitan Park? They can walk or bike to work. Thousands of good-paying union jobs will be available once Metropolitan Park is complete. The nineteen sixty-four, sixty-five World's Fair had the theme, "There's a great, big, beautiful tomorrow." Metropolitan Park is a great, big, beautiful tomorrow for next generation. Home to both New York City airports that bring tourists to our great city, Metropolitan Park will keep these tourists in Queens. Why leave Queens for other parts of New York City when you have amazing tourist sites and restaurants right here? Airy Metropolitan Park to a neighborhood that already includes Cityfield, the U.S. Open, as well as the soccer stadium currently under construction, along with museums, theaters, and zoos, this will make the area a one-stop attraction that will bring thousands of jobs and tourist dollars to Queens. Forget Manhattan, Brooklyn, the Bronx, Staten Island. Queens is the go-to borough. I urge you to see the vision of a great, big, beautiful tomorrow and approve Metropolitan Park. Let's go Mets, let's go Queens, and let's go Metropolitan Park.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us. Okay, Seth Bornstein is up next. Mr. Bornstein, welcome.
Good afternoon, everybody. My career in economic development started in nineteen seventy-nine, almost fifty years ago, which I can't believe. I've been Director of the, uh, Queens Economic Development Corporation since two thousand nine, fifteen years. I'm here to vo- voice my enthusiastic support for this proj- project. I have witnessed many changes in our borough over the decades. Economic development means growth that serves and benefits the people of Queens. Or as my mentor, the late Borough President, Class Sholmer, some of you may remember, used to say, "Put spread on the table for the people of Queens." This is crucial if we remain a world-class center that fuses energy, commerce, and culture. A project like Metropolitan Park would have been unfathomable twenty-five years ago, or even fifteen years ago. But that has changed so much. Geographically, educationally, and socially, our borough is coming to its own, as demonstrated by the growth of our hub, Long Island City, Jamaica, and nearby Flushing. We are the region's largest transportation center with newly rebuilt airports. Our schools, public and private, from grade school to grad school, turn out students qualified and eager to join the workforce. And as the most diverse county in the world, we have the language, li- language, communication, and cultural sensitivity needed to succeed locally globally and welcome people to our borough, our city and our borough. Metropolitan Park harnesses the energy of our population and provides jo- will provide jobs for thousands of young people, many first and second-generation New Yorkers seeking to find careers in their borough. This is true across all skill sets, from entry-level jobs to highly technical positions. Our businesses will be the beneficiary of this vast investment, not just in construction, the construction period, the decades to come. In doing so, small businesses will transform to mid-sized and eventually large businesses, expanding their employment and increasing tax revenue. The bottom line is that we have a chance to transform one of the largest tracts of unutilized land in this city and turn it into an economic engine that future generations will thank us for. We cannot squander this opportunity. And the public process that we got to us to this point today has been unimaginable years ago. I've seen the development of Long Island City in Jamaica, parts of Rockaway. Nothing close to this came together where they've met. Like they said, over a thousand meetings. I've been at, not a thousand, many of them over the last three or four, three years, I think. And the public process and input has really, uh, made a difference, and will make a difference going forward. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, let's move on to Bliss Butrago on Zoom and Jamie Ong on Zoom.
Uh, Chair, we no longer have Bliss or Jamie in Zoom.
How about, uh, Bedelia Cameron? By phone.
I do not have Bedelia either.
Megan Taylor, Daniel Bianco.
No Megan, no Daniel.
Okay, let's move on to, uh, Nicole Bailey here in the room. Ms. Bailey, welcome, followed by Kenneth Cohen.
Good afternoon, Commission. Uh, my name is Nicole Bailey, and I am the Principal of the Learning Tree St. Mark's School, uh, elementary-middle school located in Flushing, Queens. We've had a crisscross experience of being located on the Corona side of where the park would be located, and now on the Flushing side. So, I've been around for a while, and I know a lot about community. I know a lot about families. I know a lot about children. And in my opinion, this park would benefit all of us. It would benefit my children, their children, and their children and beyond. I commend the team that put this project together, and I support this park one hundred percent. And I encourage this Commission to vote yes on this project.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Cohen?
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Kenneth Cohen, uh, President of the NAACP Flushing Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kenneth Cohen, President of the NAACP Flushing Branch, a member of Queens Community Board 8, and a member of IVW Local 3, which is New York City's Electrical Union. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak today. Also want to thank Queens Future and Metropolitan Park for this opportunity, because that's what this is. It's been an opportunity. From a community advocate standpoint, you know, I've been a part of a lot of different developments within the Flushing community. And never have we had the opportunity to come to the table and participate in a development before it's even approved. You know, I've felt that sting of bringing the community together for something that we're against, and it's still passing and changes being made to our community that we weren't a part of. And this is the exact opposite. And hopefully it serves as a model as to how development is done in the future. We should be at the table at the beginning. A project should look like it came from our ideas. You know, my six-year-old sees renderings of this project and says, "Dad, oh, didn't Miss So-and-so suggest that at one of those meetings you took me to?" So this has been an inclusive project of not just people that are overly engaged in their community, but it's even engaging kids. Now, I've seen numerous people bring their kids to these community engagement meetings, and I've seen them write little suggestions on a Post-it and stick it on one of the papers. So this is something that our kids will see and know that they were a part of it in the future. As a member of IVW Local 3, you know, nobody wants to build union in this city anymore, right? New York City is a union town, and we're allowing unskilled labor to take over this city. And this project has committed to building 100% union, to maintaining union. You know, as an unemployed electrician, that's important to me, you know, being able to work in my community, to have the opportunity to ride a bike even, you know, and go to work. You know, the fact that there are three housing projects in Flushing. You have Pominock, Bland, and Latimer. Nobody ever goes to them and extends an arm to say, "What do you all need? What do you all want?" And this project has, you know, the opportunity for generational jobs. You read articles about the casino workers in Las Vegas negotiating raises and benefit packages for themselves. That should be the opportunity that Queens residents have as well. It shouldn't just be excluded to Vegas. So I 100% support this project. I hope that, you know, this project serves as a model for how development is done in this city in the future, because it's not just Queens Future, it's the future for New York City and beyond. So thank you all.
Hey, thank you. Thanks for being with us. Okay, next up is Yoslin Gonal Estrella, followed by Jonathan Forgash here in the room, and then Dion Sung Yu on Zoom.
Good afternoon. My name is Yoslin Gonal Estrella. Good to see you all. And I'm the Executive Director of Neighborhood Housing Services of Queens, and we have been in the community for 30 years. And I am in support, and we are in support, of Metropolitan Park proposal. Because let's face the fact that we know that our low-to-mothered-income neighbors, our homeowners and our renters, are struggling in Queens, and we need adequate jobs so that our neighbors can stay and thrive in the neighborhoods that they live in. Access to adequate jobs is directly related to access to adequate housing. At $8 billion investment, Metropolitan Park will create 23,000 jobs and will transform an empty-fenced parking lot into a regional epicenter of economic vitality for generations to come. And I've been in the community for more than 23 years. And this is, as many of our other speakers have related, there has been very few instances that the community has been front and center of creating a vision for the future of our neighborhoods. And this proposal is really, has ensured that the community voice is part of it. So I recommend and the commission to vote yes on this proposal and to create, and to also, for the various possibilities of Queens to prosper. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jonathan Forgash. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jonathan Forgash. I am a proud Queens resident and the founder of Queens Together. We're a restaurant-based food relief organization. Through our work, we partner with independent restaurants and community organizations to provide culturally appropriate meals and groceries to neighbors facing food and economic insecurity. So today, we've been talking about the future of Queens and what's possible. I would like to talk about Metropolitan Park and what they've been doing in Queens over the past year with our organization. Metropolitan Park really gets community engagement and support. They show up, they participate, and they are deeply involved in our communities. Thanks to their support and partnership, Queens Together has been able to make a tangible, positive impact across Queens in just this past year alone. We've been able to provide food relief programming to thousands of neighbors from NYCHA communities in Astoria and Long Island City, to food pantries in Corona and Flushing, to churches and masjids in East Elmhurst and Jamaica. What's more, this food relief funding flows directly through our restaurant network, creating economic development at the neighborhood level. Metropolitan Park's support also extends to our business resource programs, empowering local restaurants with events, promotion, and business expertise. Families and small businesses benefit from the work we all do together in the borough. Now, there's a lot to celebrate about the proposed Metropolitan Park project and their commitment to New York City, but I'd like to talk about one benefit, and that is jobs. In Queens, a good-paying job isn't just important, it's life-changing. Through my work with food relief, I see heartbreaking reality of families waiting on long pantry lines, juggling two or three low-wage jobs just to get by. The solution to food and economic insecurity isn't more free food, it's good-paying jobs. Metropolitan Park will create thousands of union jobs that provide stability, dignity, and opportunity. A good job means food on the table, rent paid on time, and maybe even savings for the future. This project is a unique opportunity to improve the wealth and health of our Queens residents. I urge you, from the bottom of my heart, to please approve the Metropolitan Park project, and thank you all for your time here today.
Great. Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, Dion Sung Yu on Zoom is next, followed by Catherine Servino on the phone.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Is this Dion Sung Yu?
Yes, yes.
Great. We can hear you loud and clear.
Okay. So, good afternoon. My name is Dion Yu. I am representing the Flushing Business Improvement District. I am here to voice my support for this project, as we believe this is the right project for our community. Just the sheer volume of jobs that have been created, showing the construction and the post-construction, it would be a great benefit for our community, especially with our community over 230 food establishments and supermarkets. We believe the workers there, when they work there, they're going to be, they will have to eat, and they will have to shop. I think it is the right project and the right mix for our community. The second point I want to make is that when this project's done, we are thrilled, as we believe that this would jumpstart Flushing tourism. As the number of guests, tourists that this project will bring to our community, it would truly give a boost to our hotel industry, which is booming in our community. And also, last but not least, the open space that have been created. We're looking forward to it as a community. We need those open spaces, especially as joined by waterfront. Although that we're separated by water, I think it would truly complement what we need as a community. So I'm here to support. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, next is Catherine Servino, followed by John Leonard.
Hi, this is Catherine Servino. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it. So I run Coastal Preservation Network, a nonprofit environmental advocacy organization based in College Point, just across Flushing Bay from the site of this project. And I've been a parks advocate and a nonprofit organization leader in College Point for 23 years. My family, both my mom and my dad's sides raised their families in Corona. I have a long history in this area, just to say. So I've seen personally the skyrocketing use of our parks, our New York City parks, since COVID, and the thirst for more green space, all of the competing uses that have come to collide against each other within our parks since COVID, that has the burgeoning population around here in our neighborhood calling for more green space. So when I hear demapping of parkland and trying to redefine parkland as not parkland just because it has not been used as parkland, it's a false construct to me to present it in that way. And like, and one of the earlier speakers mentioned, equating it to righting the wrongs of Robert Moses, whose history of disenfranchisement is, you know, read The Power Broker, I mean, anyone who's not familiar, I'm sure you all are. So this continues along that path. So I think if you really want to right wrong, convert the parking lot park into a unit that has multi-tier parking and give the rest as true parklands, not pieces of parklands within a for-profit conglomerate of looming hotels, buildings, food courts, everything that's about profit. People need green space. People are clamoring for green space. There's a mental health crisis in this city. There's too many of us up on top of each other. And I also think that our combined sewer overflows in Flushing Bay, as Rebecca from Guardians pointed out, is at beyond crisis levels. And you just have all of this new infrastructure coming in when we only recently upgraded our local sewage treatment plant, Tomlin Island in College Point, to handle sewage levels from decades ago. We're not even up to 2025, you know, capacity, from decades ago, that we cannot absorb this, and we should not have to absorb this. We need green space, especially given we're also getting a soccer stadium across the street. I mean, how much can a community take? You know, so thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is what I wanted to say, and I appreciate the time.
Great. Thank you. Next up is John Leonard, followed by Dinu Ahmed and Chloé Chaudry.
I do not see John in Zoom. John is not in the Zoom.
John is not in Zoom. How about Dinu Ahmed?
Dinu is not in the Zoom either.
Chloé Chaudry?
We do have two numbers in the Zoom. Chloé identified as a dial-in. So if one of these numbers is Chloé, please unmute.
Chloé, are you there?
Wait, sorry. I'm not Chloé, I think.
Okay.
Okay, if you're not Chloé, then let's hang on for a moment.
Chloé is not in the Zoom.
Okay, let's move on to Joe Lamb here in the room. Mr. Lamb, welcome, followed by Bianca Ing on Zoom.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify. My name is Joe Lamb. I am here to express my strong support for the Metropolitan Park project, a transformative development that promised bringing 23,000 union jobs during construction and 6,000 union jobs once open. It will revitalize Flushing's and its surrounding community, not to mention significantly boost local businesses, including restaurants and shops. This visionary project offer a comprehensive mix of benefit, including a live concert venue, a food hall featuring local vendors, a world-class hotel and casino. Additionally, the inclusion of 25 acres of open green space for community use underscore the team's commitment to creating a vibrant, accessible, and inclusive environment for everyone. As someone with professional experience in marketing and outreach for major casinos, major gaming organizations such as MGM and Hot Walk Casino, I can confidently say that the Metropolitan Park team, extensive community engagement effort set them apart. Over the past two and a half years, they have gone above and beyond to involve local stakeholders, including particularly members of the Chinese and Hawaiian community, soliciting their input on concerns, ideas, and priority for the project. What stands out most to me is how they not only listen, but add on this feedbacks. Incorporating many of this idea into the project design, this level of responsiveness demonstrate Metropolitan Park commitment to being a responsible and collaborative partner to our community. I firmly believe this project will be a catalyst for economic and cultural growth in Flushing and beyond, and I urge the necessary authority to approve it without delay. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is Bianca Ing on Zoom, followed by John Shin here in the room.
Hello, am I up next?
We can hear you.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Bianca Ing, Program Committee Chair of Flushing Bay and also former trustee of Queens Botanical Garden. I'm here today to show my full support for the Metropolitan Park project, because I believe this project offers a unique opportunity to foster both economic growth and community well-being. It will bring, it will create jobs, stimulate the local economy, and also will, and also will provide the much-needed green space for the communities to enjoy. When the local small businesses in downtown Flushing first heard about this idea of the Metropolitan Park with the food hall, there's actually some concern from the small business owners, especially restaurant owners, because their concern was this will draw businesses away from them. But through our conversations and meetings with Mr. Michael Sullivan and his Metropolitan Parks team, we raised, we raised our concerns about this project, and we actually in discussion, in creating ideas and initiatives to actually encourage visitors to the Metropolitan Park to go venture out to the surrounding neighborhoods and support the businesses in those neighborhoods. So we look forward to keep working with the Metropolitan Parks team to create more initiatives, to bring about economic growth in the surrounding neighborhoods. And one more important aspect of this project is the provision of the green space. The green space is much needed for the downtown Flushing residents, because there are a lot of pipelines, there are a lot of residential and commercial development in the pipelines, but none of them would offer the amount of green space that would enable the public to enjoy, like the Metropolitan Park would offer. And the green space is essential to provide physical and mental, to provide physical and mental health, fostering a sense of community and preserving the natural environment. So all in all, the Flushing believes that this development is a balanced approach that will bring both economic prosperity to the local businesses and an improved quality of life for the local residents. So we hope the City Planning Commission will support. So we hope, um, the City Planning Commission will support, um, Metropolitan Park.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Shin, John Shin here with us? Yes, welcome, uh, followed by Reginald Agus.
Great, all right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is John Shin and I'm here today on behalf of Korean Community Services of Metropolitan New York to express our strong support for the Queens Future Project, a plan that holds a promise of not just transforming infrastructure, but changing lives across our borough. For over fifty years, the KCS has proudly served the immigrant communities of New York City. We are the longest and largest Korean nonprofit in New York City, and we've been here for those who need it most, empowering seventeen hundred individuals daily through a program focused on aging, mental health, public health, and workforce development. These are not just services, they are the foundation of our, our economic resilience and opportunity for the most vulnerable members of our society. At KCS, we believe that economic empowerment begins with access to good jobs, stable, rewarding careers that help people build their future. Our workforce development program is designed to give people the tools, confidence, and support they need to secure those jobs. Our fifty-five-plus-paid internship program trains sixty-five to seventy individuals every year, preparing, preparing them for long-term roles such as kitchen assistant and more. This program isn't about temporary work, it's about creating pathway to permanent employment. And every year, over thirty percent of our participants go on to secure long-term careers that transform their lives. This work is already changing lives, but the Queens Future Project offers an incredible opportunity to scale up our efforts and create hundreds of high-quality jobs across sectors. This is more than just employment, it's about giving the most vulnerable members of our community access to opportunity. It's about developing pathways to success that provide training, support, and long-term growth. And with the right partnership like the one we hope to build with this plan, the Queens Future Project can ensure that every New Yorker has fair shot at success. The Queens Future Project isn't just about new buildings or expanded infrastructure, it's an investment in people, it's an investment in creating high-quality jobs and training opportunities to ensure economy mobility for immigrant communities and all New Yorkers. It's about ensuring that everyone, regardless of background or status, has the chance to thrive. Thank you again for your time and your commitment of this vision. KCS is ready and eager to collaborate to bring Queens Future Project to life. Together, we believe we can create brighter, more equitable future for everyone in Queens and New York City. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Reginald, come on up and tell me how I've done damage to your last name.
I certainly was going to address that. My name is Reginald Agus, you missed it by that much.
Thanks.
And I'm here to offer my full support to the Metropolitan Park Project as a lifetime resident of Queens, born in South Jamaica, raised in Hollis, Queens, and now a resident of Corona for over twenty-plus years. I want to circle back to the environmental impact of this particular project. I am also a resident of Dory Miller with my neighbor and co-board member, uh, Mr. De Valera. Um, the environmental impact to this will be of great significance. Living where we are, Dory Miller is sandwiched between the parking spaces at Citi Field and the airport at LaGuardia and the runways. What this produces is that we live in an urban oven. So on a regular day, the radiant temperature is always ten to twelve degrees higher than normal, but then there's no relief because in the evening, that heat is released back into the atmosphere. By turning this parking lot into a park, it's going to help reduce that, it's going to help the pressures for the asthmatic people in the community, the elderly and the children, the people in the middle, it's going to create relief. The design of this park, they have taken great care to plant the proper trees, plants, and green spaces that are going to create the opportunity for people to breathe in a good, quality way. We're grateful for this project. We live right, uh, right across the street from it. It's going to benefit the community, it's going to benefit Queens as a whole, it's going to make Queens the jewel that it is, it's going to make it a destination location that people are going to want to come to, and it's going to benefit the city at, at large. So I'm grateful and I give my endorsement to this particular project. Again, the environmental impact of the rain, the catch basins that are going to be in place, helping to stem the tide of sewage going in, I hear a lot of, uh, noise about how the sewers are going to be impacted. They have taken very, very, very good, uh, steps to make sure and assure that it's not going to negatively impact the, the community. And lastly, on the, the topic of displacement, this project is not going to displace anything or any of the residents in the community. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. You almost got it. I appreciate you and have a great day.
Thank you for that. I appreciate your openness, uh, next time I'll get it perfect. All right, let me move to Elizabeth, uh, Bion, on Zoom, uh, followed by Sidra Ahmed.
Uh, can I start?
Yes, tell me your name and then let's, go ahead.
Sure. My name is Elizabeth Bion. I used to work at the Queens Department Office and Queens District Attorney's Office. Now I'm, uh, working for a nonprofit. So, uh, thank you for giving me the time to testify for the Metropolitan Park Project. So I attended a couple of presentations and it was an eye-opening experience to see a project that can transform the borough and the city we live in. Metropolitan Park will utilize private funds to provide the public with a world-class recreation area, including parks, hotels, restaurants, a modern subway station, and many, many more. So it will be a park I will be proud to introduce to friends from all over the world. This is not a one-person decision, it is a collective effort involving thousands of hours of community input and professional work. So the team led by Sully deserve applause for this. And the park is multifunctional. The most controversial aspect is the gaming casino. The argument that the casino will bring gambling addiction and other crimes does not hold. First of all, uh, how many people have now been to casino? I think maybe a handful, right? But how many people have become addicted to it? Maybe like one percent or less. So a well-managed place with quality services and businesses won't be a bed of crime. On the contrary, an obscure and neglected land is more likely to nurture negative things. Uh, I think Metropolitan Park Project will bring a lot of job opportunities. Think about the temporary and permanent jobs the park will bring. It will make the community more sustainable and thriving. And also the tourism revenue from, um, spectators of the baseball, tennis, and soccer, as well as other visitors. And if I asked you to name a few landmarks in Queens, you might mention the remnants of the world's fair from a hundred years ago, the Unisphere or the US Open, not many more. So I think we need to vote yes to Metropolitan Park as our next landmark in Queens history, a project that generation will be grateful for the vision and the investment in the community we belong to and love. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is Sidra Ahmed.
I do not have Sidra in the room.
How about Cara Fan?
Um, hello, can you guys hear me?
Is, is that you, Ms. Fan?
Yes, hello.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm here on behalf of myself, but I, you know, I also organize with Flushing Worker Center, who, who's a part of the Flushing Ali- Flushing Against Displacement Alliance, and I'm speaking because I'm opposed to this plan. Um, and, you know, I just want to say that I've been living here for a few years. My family, you know, like immigrated here, like in the eighties or whatever, but, you know, it really shouldn't matter. Like, I would say that, like, I really didn't know about this whole casino plan until very recently, and, you know, there are other alternative visions, and I went to the community board meeting for CB seven and even people that voted yes for, I don't remember what it was, like some sort of rezoning, like, a lot of them were saying, like, you know, why does there need to be a casino here? Like, it really, you know, it could be an arcade, a theater, like, whatever, like, I just don't think we should trust the interest of this, of a private sector and give up so much of public land for this. Like, I really think, like, you know, this doesn't really sound like a good deal, like, um, and I don't, I don't know, I think that we really should be doing far more outreach and getting more people's opinions, because even when I went to the town hall for the Flush- the Phoenix Meadows Town Hall presentation against Meadow or Metropolitan Park, um, I feel like, I don't know, like, it's, it just, um, it just doesn't seem like, like we should be rushing into something so potentially dangerous, and it's not even that good of an investment. I was reading a few, like, studies about the impact of casinos, like, in urban spaces over time, and it's all pretty fresh, like, people are just trying to pop them up, like, to, uh, you know, siphon neighborhoods of, you know, their, their money. But, like, even if, you know, there was prosperity, like, it has kind of like this max life of like ten years, like, we really shouldn't be making these short-term investments that really only benefit those that are, you know, putting all the money into it, like Steve Cohen, I think, is putting like eight billion to this, like, where does he think he's going to get that eight billion back? Like, it's going to be coming from us, so, um, I really appreciate you giving me three whole minutes, that's incredible, and, um, you know, I hope. Thank you.
Thank you for being the first in history to thank us for three whole minutes. We appreciate it. Uh, let me move on to Kelso Garcia on Zoom, Gretchen Begley on Zoom.
I don't have Kelso or Gretchen on Zoom, sure.
How about Zeke Luger?
We have Zeke.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, um, uh, thank you for, um, allowing me to give testimony. My name is Zeke Luger, I'm a member of Flushing Worker Center, which is a part of a fed-up coalition. Flushing Worker Center serves workers of all trades, especially immigrant workers, um, uh, and together we fight to improve our working and living conditions. Uh, we are very concerned about, uh, uh, this project worsening impacts from previous rezonings that the city has promoted in our community. Uh, in particular, we are concerned about racist targeting of our community, to promote gambling, destroy our health, tear apart our families, and, uh, take away our hard-earned wages. This project will only bring downward mobility for immigrant families now additionally burdened by gambling addictions. Uh, the increasing property taxes and rents from yet another massive development, uh, uh, displacing tenants, community organizations, and small businesses, uh, with a disproportionate harm to the restaurant sector, which is the biggest provider of jobs in Flushing. Um, and, uh, we, we are also very concerned about, uh, city giving away unprecedentedly large, uh, tract of public land, uh, that is supposed to be, uh, our public land is supposed to be for us, uh, and instead we, uh, would be giving it away to a billionaire to destroy our community. Uh, this public land should instead be developed in a way that supports the, uh, personal and economic health of our community. Uh, the City Planning Commission will stand against this racist plan, instead promote public health and the health of our community, families. Um, uh, Flushing Worker Center will submit further written testimony.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Tom Greck.
I won't ding you on the name this time, it's okay.
Sorry, yeah.
No, just, just kidding, it's all good. Uh, it's all part of the whole, uh, gorgeous mosaic of New York City. My pleasure, good to see, uh, some friendly faces. Congratulations again on the city of yes. Um, Tom Grech, President and CEO of the Queens Chamber of Commerce, oldest and largest business association in Queens County since nineteen eleven. Um, just a couple of things to correct the record, I know this is not supposed to be a point-counterpoint type of thing at all, but when somebody says something about lack of community engagement, myself and most of the folks in the audience and those in favor on the phone have been to those fourteen community board meetings. I think the final number across all six was eighty-three percent support by vote. We were there, it was a wonderful expression of, of democracy, and so I just want to make sure that, that people understand that who might be watching and for the record as well. So again, it's a Chamber of Commerce thing, right? So you think about what's important to us, all the things the other folks mentioned about, the use of the land, the parkland, the remediation, the resiliency are all really, really important. For us, it's about not just the jobs, but careers. We're talking about, you know, eight billion dollars of investment, all private, in an environment where city-state federal resources are all being tagged and all being very, very difficult to, to amass. This is private investment. We applaud developers and people like this, both at the Hard Rock and from Steve Cohen and the Mets, for committing this kind of funding to a place like Queens. We're in the middle of a lot of different things right now in Queens. We've got about thirty, thirty-five billion dollars of, of development going on, whether it's Innovation Q and S, the soccer stadium, two of our airports now, uh, world-class, worldwide. This is just the icing on the cake to make it a really, really special thing. The notion of this place being a park is if you're there, whether you're a Met fan or a Yankee fan, if you go by the area over there, it's concrete, it's bedrock, it's ugly, it's not workable in any way, shape, or form. But for us, again, it's about the investment of the eight billion dollars, the twenty-three thousand construction jobs, again, all union, and then post-construction, six thousand, dare I say, careers with benefits, unionized, and all the things that go along with that. Opportunities for people in Queens and beyond. Uh, again, we are full-throated supporters, we represent fourteen hundred members and a hundred and fifty thousand Queens-based employees. Beyond Queens, there's hundreds of thousands of folks that affiliated with our chamber, and we are all in support of, of this project. When it comes to the Queens Food Hall, some folks might say, well, it's this big thing, it's going to be a draw away from the local community and those small businesses. To a person, the ones that we've interviewed, the ones that we've spent time with, they're loving this. They truly believe that a rising tide lifts all boats, and so, again, full-throated support throughout the business community in Queens County for this, and I thank you very much and I yield my time, whatever's left.
Thank you, Tom, thank you very much. Okay, uh, let's go to, um, uh, Farhana Husani of Waterfront Alliance, followed by Brian Chen. Hello.
Hi there, thank you for, for having us here today. Uh, my name is Farhana Husani, I am the Director of Programs and Climate Initiatives at the Waterfront Alliance, which is the leader in climate resilient solutions and policy for New York City and nationally. I am delivering the testimony today on behalf of Courtney Keenig War- World, the President of Waterfront Alliance, in support of the Metropolitan Park Project. Here is the Waterfront Alliance testimony. We are proud that the Waterfront Alliance strongly supports one of the most forward-thinking, climate-resilient, public-private partnerships currently in New York City, a project that will bring solutions to the most climate-threatening of all New York City parks, Flushing Meadows Corona Park. Today, the Department of City Planning has an opportunity to make sure a p- a project will become reality that would bring climate solutions to Queens. This is a project that will offer opportunities to fund major infrastructure improvement at Flushing Meadows Corona Park. The fact is, gaming is coming to New York City, and the opportunity now is to approve a project that brings a targeted, climate-resilient solution to a blighted parking lot that is noth- that is currently nothing more than an empty asphalt. The hard truth is that funding for climate resilience projects and infrastructure is in very short supply, and it will only become more so under the new administration in Washington. The billions needed for climate resilience across our region come from progressive public-private partnerships like Metropolitan Park. I am also proud that Waterfront Alliance is leading a major climate resilience study of Flushing Meadows Corona Park right now, in partnership with New York City Parks and through the generous support of the Metropolitan Park Team and Congresswoman Meng. right now, in partnership with New York City Parks and through the generous support of the Metropolitan Park Team and Congresswoman Meng. The study, when fully funded, will bring long-term climate improvements to the park and to the millions of park-goers who depend upon and enjoy Flushing Meadows Corona Park as their backyard. What are some of the climate impacts the park faces? We can sum it up in four words: more heat and more water. If we don't design and fund solutions now, entire swaths of the park will be permanently underwater or flooded so frequently they will be unusable. The shaded oases in the park will be harmed by heat that the existing tree canopy alone cannot reduce. Pollution from heavy rains will sweep dirt, trash, and sewer discharges into the bay and the park's lakes, and this will only get worse with the heavier climate-fueled rainfall that is sure to come. This is the future if nothing is to be done. The Waterfront Alliance therefore urges the city to approve this project so we can fully embrace its solutions and the opportunities it provides for a better future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is Brian Chen here in the room. Welcome, Mr. Chen, followed by Lang Ming on Zoom and Isaac, uh, Carmin Yanni, also on Zoom. Go right ahead.
Good afternoon, and thank you, City Planning Commission, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Brian Chen, and I am the Chief Strategy Officer at the Chinese American Planning Council. We are a nearly sixty-year-old social services organization rooted in community and anchored, uh, across New York City, including our Queens Community Center in Flushing that serves tens of thousands of residents in the borough annually. From early childcare and after-school programs to English literacy classes and older adult programming, CPCs, the other CPCs, um, services ensure community members not only survive, but thrive. I'm here today because the Chinese American Planning Council is in strong support of the inclusive, community-integrated workforce and economic development potential of the Metropolitan Park Project as it aligns with our agency's mission to promote the social and economic empowerment of immigrant and low-income New Yorkers. As an organization that provides linguistically accessible and culturally competent employment services and wraparound supports, we believe Metropolitan Park has the potential to move the needle on economic mobility for Queens residents by creating real pathways for the upskilling, hiring, and retention of local talent. Through the project's commitment to supporting workforce training, job creation, and career advancement led by organizations like the Chinese American Planning Council, Metropolitan Park is positioned to be an opportunity hub inclusive of the local, small-business community and the borough's diverse but often marginalized populations, including multilingual and multi-generational immigrants, individuals with disabilities, and unemployed and underemployed Queens residents served by community organizations such as ours. I want to thank you again for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up, uh, two on Zoom, Lang Ming, Isaac Carmin Yanni.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, hi. Uh, my name's Liang Ming. I am the Program Director at the Gao Cultural Center located on Forty-first Avenue in downtown Flushing. Our center provides cultural wellness and youth development programs and serving as a hub for community activity. We aim to serve the multicultural population of our community, including but not, not limited to the underserved new immigrant like myself, low-income households residing in Flushing and nearby communities. I support this project because I have witnessed firsthand how Sunny and his team engaged with the community. They hosted one of the very first visioning sessions in our center. Residents from different ethnic groups were invited to sit at the same table and share their visions and concerns. I am most impressed by the live music venue that has the potential to bring the best singers and bands to Queens, especially those singers and bands from Asia countries. Please, uh, consider my proposal because, uh, once again, my name is Liang Ming, meaning brightness, both in Chinese, so I hope you can vote yes with me, a bright person, for the Queens future, brighter future. Thank you for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much for that. Okay, do we have Isaac Carmin Yanni on Zoom? Great. Followed by Aaron Lou. Yes, welcome.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Isaac Carmin Yanni. I'm a Corona resident, a member of Community Board Four, and a member of the board at Forest Hills Chateau, a co-op in Corona. I am in support of Metro Park. It is good for Queens. It brings a much-needed public transportation upgrade without spending public dollars. It brings jobs to us, both in the construction sector temporarily and permanent jobs into Queens with a preference for Queens residents. It gives things to do for people who are coming to an event at City Field or in the new venues that may sprout here, as opposed to just leaving all at once, tying up traffic, and then taking their dollars elsewhere. The food hall, which, to the point of hurting small businesses, the reality is that with this food hall program, there will be a points card to spend at local businesses, including restaurants, that a person can accrue points on as they patronize Metro Park. There's music and other events that would be brought. There's been much said, uh, from some sectors with regard to gambling addiction. But the reality is, is that, as was mentioned by a previous speaker, gambling is coming to New York City. Why not bring the business to Queens? The reality is that Metro Park is working with Elencor and several other CBOs on addiction partnering, dealing with issues of problem gambling, which is probably a small issue to be worried about with this proposal, training customer-facing employees to look for addiction signs, a self-exclusion program matched to other watch lists and voluntary face ID. All of these are things that have been discussed at various hearings and engagements in the community. There are tax revenues to the MTA, to schools. There are local hiring centers to solicit local talent to come into this project. It is massively helpful environmentally, as was mentioned earlier. We practically have our own weather in Flushing Meadows Corona Park. Uh, it connects to surrounding neighborhoods for people that do not have a car, and so it makes, gives easy access to the park. So in conclusion, I would say, let entertainment be the economic engine that makes Corona and Flushing a destination for years to come, and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Aaron Lou is also on Zoom.
I do not have Aaron Lou by share.
Okay, Sarah On.
I don't believe I have Sarah either.
Margaret Flanagan.
We have Margaret.
Ms. Flanagan, are you there?
Margaret, are you able to unmute?
Yes, I apologize, and thank you for your help with that. I'm Margaret Flanagan, a lifelong Queens resident and a guardian of Flushing Bay. And I encourage you all to vote no, uh, on demapping parkland. Call it a park or a parking lot, but this is public open space. And in this proposal, Flushing Meadows Park is getting smaller. One of the commissioners asked earlier about acre-for-acre replacement, and it was actually wordplay in the applicant's response. There is actually no acre-for-acre replacement happening with this current proposal. There is a net decrease in mapped parkland. So if you still want to support the proposal, please include a modified condition to replace acre-for-acre parkland as recommended by New York State. I also encourage you all to vote no on commercial zoning to prevent giving profit from our public land to a private developer. The future commercial value of what is proposed is so much more incredibly high than any of the projects or benefits being discussed now. So if you are still interested in voting yes, consider a modification that requires the Community Benefit Fund to be an annual contribution that is higher than it is now. And consider modifying the zoning level that, in a way that would explicitly disallow a casino, which would actually prey on the assets of my neighbors in our community to benefit a private developer. I also encourage you to vote no because of an inadequate, uh, environmental impact statement for displacement. The environmental impact statement only studies a quarter mile around the project, which is mostly parkland and even water. Ironically, the wide swath of folks and community engagement that the applicant brags about are actually not being included in the studies of the harmful effects like displacement. And a project is not climate resilient if it displaces the community that it's meant to protect. Public health must also be deeply considering the applicant, the impacts of a casino in the EIS. And you should require a neighborhood character assessment that takes into account the quality of life issues that always accompany, like, drug use, um, petty theft, homelessness, public drunkenness. These are known issues. The applicant has offered that these seventy acres will be pat- patrolled by private security to help, but there's no enforcement role there. These issues will burden our city agencies like NYPD and homeless services. So I thank you all, uh, commissioners, uh, for your good questions, for your critical thinking, and for your truth-seeking on the, the land use and the environmental impacts of this proposal. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. Lily Randall.
I do not have Lily, chair.
Cody, Cody Herman.
We do have Cody.
Okay.
Hi. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Hi, um, my name is Cody Herman. I'm a lifelong resident of Flushing, also on the Board of Guardians of Flushing Bay. Um, and I also am on Queens Community Board Seven, so I've been to a lot of these meetings and a lot of the community engagement meetings that the applicant has held. Um, and to be honest, I didn't write anything for this meeting, so I'm just gonna wing it. Um, I guess I'll start kind of just by like, you know, I was in Las Vegas this last weekend and really realizing the gravity of what a Las Vegas-style casino is and looks like and the scale of that type of building. Um, it seems kind of egregious to start putting these things on the edges of New York City, um, in that scale of like a two thousand five hundred-room hotel, all that type of stuff. Um, and it makes even less sense to me that you want to put it on a piece of land that we know is sinking, um, based off NASA studies. And, you know, next to a park, um, it just seems kind of bizarre to put that type of infrastructure next to a place that's supposed to be for children and families and kind of for relaxing. Um, it just doesn't make sense to have a casino there. I really think this is like not the right move to alienate and give away parkland. Um, for something like that, it just really doesn't match. Um, and then really looking into the draft environmental impact statement. Um, on page sixty-six, um, the neighborhood of Flushing where I live is primarily mentioned only in reference to when construction, where, where construction workers will park on game days. Um, and a lot of like, the impacts in Flushing won't really, weren't really studied in the DEIS. Um, the traffic study in the DEIS includes some intersections in Flushing, um, though it's important to note that whatever the traffic predictions may be, the DEIS and other documents don't contain any long-term analysis of the traffic when both Queens' future projects exist and the Willets Point Soccer Stadiums and all those new homes. Um, there are numbers that you can actually look at in the DEIS to really see, um, what intersections will be totally unmitigable um, as per the DEIS. Um, and an appendix E, Table E two, which looks at non-game day weekends, midday at peak hour. Um, there's an intersection in Roosevelt Avenue on one hundred and fourteenth Street, um, that has a control delay that goes up from a unit, um, that's seventy-eight point three in the no-build condition to over five hundred, um, in the build condition and is noted as unmitigable. Um, the level of service falls to an F, a fail, and the table does not define what a control delay is or note the time unit, but presumably if we're talking about seconds, um, there's a five-hundred-second delay at Roosevelt and one-fourteenth Street on the middle of the day and a weekend on a non-game day because of this project. Um, and you can look more into Appendix E about that, um, and see all the unmitigated traffic impacts. I mean, it's really just like, how, how does that make any sense on an intersection like that, a street like that? Um, and again, I have the same concerns around the DOT outfalls and DEP outfalls, and I'm hoping to get answers, um, from the DEP about that before. We have to keep making more votes on this.
Time.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Herman. Thank you very much. Larry Caliegos.
We do not have Larry.
Jeffrey Lin. Robert Ojez, Jeffrey Lin, okay, good.
Good afternoon, chairmen and commissioners. My name is Jeffrey Lin. I'm a longtime Flushing resident. I'm here to show my support for the, uh, Metropolitan Park projects. As a, uh, a construction, uh, company owner, I recognize the importance of the projects. So, uh, throughout my long-term, uh, Flushing, uh, resident life, I've been seeing, uh, Flushing develop from a small town into a great business hub. I recognize the importance of the, uh, business opportunities, creating, uh, tax-paying jobs. And from those tax-paying jobs, the tax we generate comes back to the communities. So, that's how we believe as a businessman that we can improve our communities. So, I don't want to emphasize how important what kind of the, uh, opportunity this job can, uh, provide, because a lot of people have indicated. I just want to emphasize one thing that it will not happen if it's they ask for and the John asks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robert Dorsky next, followed by Olga Reyes. Mr. Dorsky, welcome.
Hey, good afternoon. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Robert Dorsky. I'm a small business owner at a Flushing, Queens, uh, restaurant. I'm also a former board president of Sage House Condominiums. Next to Dory Miller, we are the closest property to the Metropolitan Park. So as a resident of North Corona and a owner in Flushing, it was, I felt it was very important to be here today. Uh, I know my neighbor's, uh, Reggie back there, we braved the cold today. We brave congested pricing, which is not easy, as we all know, to be here to tell you how strongly I feel for Metropolitan Park. While there are some naysayers who I severely doubt are from Queens, as someone who lives four blocks away from this, I realize the impact this will have on my neighbors, my family, and everyone in Queens. I can tell you from a business standpoint, as a restaurant owner, in hospitality, a lot of business suffered. Why do we have two airports in Queens and people take black Uber XL SUVs into Manhattan instead of passing through our neighborhoods and spending money there? I think with the addition of Metropolitan Park, we stand to benefit everyone, between the jobs, the tourists, everything. So I, I implore you, I encourage you, please, to consider this as someone who's impacted and lives right here in the actual neighborhood, to help us better our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving back to Zoom, we have Olga Reyes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we, we can, and you're gonna be followed by Ted Tang here in the room. Ms. Reyes, whenever you're ready.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you very much for having us, guys. Um, my name is Olga Reyes, and I'm a resident of Corona. I have heard the opposition arguments multiple times, and while their vision may align with Metropolitan Park in concept, there is a significant difference. They lack the funding that makes this project a reality. Instead, they continue to place blame on the coins. However, Metropolitan Park has repeatedly clarified that the current challenges stem from actions of Robert Moses, um, not their own. Penalizing Metropolitan Park for stepping up into address issues, to me, is just unjust. The opposition overlooks the critical fact that the parking lot is in question is already under the lease of the coins. And if, and Phoenix Meadow Meadows realistically proposes a project on a land that they don't control. Metropolitan Park has clearly communicated this, yet it seems to be ignored. As a member of this community, I want to see positive changes. I'm tired of the dark, underutilized parking lot, and I ambition something big and beautiful that benefits our community and benefits jobs. Um, this will also provide a safe place of childcare for our community and allow parents to work closer from home. A shorter commute means more quality time with their children. Queens deserves progress and its families, and they deserve an opportunity for better, for a better quality life. Let's support this vision that prioritizes, that prioritizes our community and the needs of the future. Let's support this vision that prioritizes, that prioritizes our community and the needs of the future. I would also like to add that not so long ago, I went to the, to Citi Field for a Mets game. And the way that their pathway to walk from Corona to Citi Field was so dangerous and the ambition that they have to fix these roads to allow more commute rather than people driving by or taking the train, it's better for, also for our community. The paths that are crossing from, let's say, one eleven Northern Boulevard over to Citi Field is so narrow, and you have a bike lane, a walk lane within the same. And the, the way the path is, is just basically one people can only walk at a time. So with the idea that they're bringing in that they want to fix this infrastructure, I think it's just a better way to allow for community to connect. I don't see anything negative about this project. Anything that it says in terms of addiction, I feel like there's more addiction with alcohol than there is for casinos. There's more addiction with drugs than there is for casinos. And honestly, if you are worried about somebody being addicted or, you know, not being able to control themselves, then that's more of a personal incident rather than a community or to blame this project for that. Thank you very much for having me, and I really would like to see your support in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Ted Tang here in the room. Mr. Tang, welcome, followed by Tenzing Parama on the phone, Sam Munson on Zoom. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Ted Tang. And while my background includes C B L's, community boards, and chambers of commerce, I'm not here to lean on that for credibility. The incredible value of Metropolitan Park is so self-evident that really logic should be enough credibility. But I am here to shake things up and address a few of the opposition's argument. And I'm tired of the ad nauseam head shaking and wondering if they ever even attempted to listen to the project presentation. First, the claim that we're giving away free parkland. This land was literally a dump. It was never a park. It was never green space, and I'm sure the Mets organization will tell you it is certainly not free. It's part of a lease package with decades remaining. There is no reality where another private entity or public is able to come in and build a green space there. Metropolitan Park is the only pathway to usable green space. Also, where was this green space idea for decades prior to Metropolitan Park? They've had decades and still can't answer the most basic questions like what it will cost or how it will be funded. This makes one thing clear. This isn't about green space. It's about empty opposition. Second, the billionaire attack. Yes, the people behind this project are wealthy. But guess what? A project of this magnitude requires connections, networks, resources, and expertise. Show me the mom and pop business that can pull off something this ginormous. The people and organizations leading the project, in fact, has already engaged plenty of small businesses to ensure that they are part of the rising tide that they saw, which is more than we can say about those making this argument. This is a distraction and personal philosophical vendetta. Third, displacement. While affordable housing is of course important, I'll remind everyone, this site is currently a parking lot, a giant parking lot. So which is if they want more apartments, more green space. I'll argue that Metropolitan Park does in fact address affordable housing. It's simply supply and demand. We can either keep building affordable housing till we run out of space, which is inevitable, or have opportunities like Metropolitan Park help decrease demand by providing thousands of families good, stable jobs with livable income that even addresses issues like workplace childcare. Then they talk about a neighborhood character. That's the point. We don't want the neighborhood character to stay the same. We want it to be better. Following the argument that attacks gaming, buses leave hourly daily and from the Port Authority to Atlantic City. In Flushing, hourly multiple buses run to casinos like Resorts World, Moogin Sun, Foxwoods, and Atlantic City. Also, let's not forget, these gaming licenses were legalized through a democratic system. Opposing Metropolitan Park because of gaming is nothing more than a backdoor attempt to overturn the will of majority. Yes, gambling is a concern, but where's the outreach every time a new bar opens? Alcoholism destroys lives too. Or better yet, if gambling is defined as risking something of value in a game to attempt to obtain something of greater value, why not protest Dave and Buster's? They serve alcohol and let kids gamble. Gambling is already part of the community. This project simply ensures it's done responsibly while providing real benefits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we'll see them sign up at the end. Dave and Buster's will, uh, hold them in. Uh, okay, let's move to Tenzing Parama on the phone, Sam Munson on Zoom.
I do not have Tenzing or Sam Munson.
How about Matthew Robert Walsh?
We do have Matthew.
Okay. Mr. Walsh, as soon as you are ready and promoted, you can go ahead and get started.
Matthew, are you able to unmute your mic in Zoom? Matthew Walsh?
Okay, so it sounds like Mr. Walsh is not responding. So let's move on to Christina Furlong in Zoom. Do we have her?
We do not, Chair.
How about Mary Leica?
We do not.
Erica Ford?
We do not.
Okay. How about Ayung Kim?
We do.
Okay. Ayung Kim, whenever you are ready. We'll look forward to hearing from you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Ayung Kim, and I serve as the Director of Economic Empowerment at the Asian American Federation, and I am a resident of Jackson Heights. The Asian American Federation has been working to support immigrant-owned small businesses for the past twenty years, fighting for resources to complement neighborhoods to create jobs, community centers, and other amenities to help our communities thrive. My team especially works closely with and in support of immigrant, immigrant small business owners across Queens in the neighbors of Flushing, Murray Hill, Elmhurst, Jackson Heights, and Astoria. We believe that the Metropolitan Park Project is poised to create thousands of good-paying jobs, provide critical economic stimulus, and expand opportunities for local residents and small businesses alike. We support this proposal that will create an N Y C park space that is actually green and enhance cultural offerings to Queens residents with an indoor live performance venue and create new opportunities for residents, restaurants for expansion to help with the post-COVID slowdown. We especially appreciate how this project team has held numerous feedback sessions that thoughtfully incorporate a feedback from our community, such as concerns around potential traffic impacts. Their latest plans demonstrate their responsiveness to these concerns with wider roads and improved highway access as well as a fully revamped seventh train stop that is currently not A D A compliant. These measures reflect a strong commitment to integrating this development with minimal disruption to existing infrastructure. But one thing I really want to highlight here that has not been mentioned so far is that in our work engaging local small business community in Queens in the past few years, we have heard over and over again about their concerns about public safety, especially in the area around this proposal area. We have seen a lot of concerns about public safety, whether it's about crime increase or lack of lighting and lack of foot traffic. We look forward to how the natural increase in foot traffic is going to, is expected from this development, paired with enhanced lighting and commercial activities that's going to contribute positively to public safety in the area. This project offers Queens residents a safer, more vibrant community environment as well as increased access to spaces for cultural and community events. As we wrestle with the post-COVID economic downturn as well as the fears of another recession coming, Metropolitan Park represents an investment in both economic vitality and quality of life improvements for New York City and especially the residents of Queens. This development will provide a long-term sustainable benefits, including good jobs to help our immigrant communities thrive, address concerns of public safety, transit access, and bring more arts and culture to the neighborhood. This is a model for a community-centered growth, and we cannot afford to miss this much-needed opportunity to transform our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Michael Fong.
I do not have Michael.
Chanel Thomas Henry?
No Chanel Thomas Henry either.
I'm gonna have success on the next one because I see him here in the room, Danny Drum. All right. Danny, welcome. Good to see you. And after Danny, we have Alexis Kalianidis. Kaliana, Kalianidis, yes. Good to see you.
Good to see you, Chair. Good to see you and see Commissioner Benjamin as well and other members of the Commission who I don't know I or think I've met yet, but good to be here to appear before you. For those of you that may not know me, I am a former city council member that represents the area near the, the project. And for years, Jalissa Ferreras, who's also here today with us and other elected officials in the area, have sought to fix an area that has been a problem for years and years and years. And finally, we have the soccer stadium, the affordable housing coming in, and now we need the other piece, which is to create a park where a parking lot currently exists. And as has been mentioned before, the area is really just asphalt and basically a dump. The only time that it's really used is when there are games there or when people are parking there. It's a small number of people that park there to get onto the Long Island Railroad or onto the subway station. The positive benefits of this is going to be twenty-three thousand jobs created, union jobs I might add. The renovation of the number seven train station, which our Chair has already mentioned, is a total mess. A new waterfront park, which is incredible. We're going to have vendor space, and for those of you that know the Jackson Heights, Corona, Elmhurst, and Flushing communities, that's very important because many of the people who live in our communities are those vendors and really would benefit from having the opportunity to sell their goods and food at Citi Field's site. Hard Rock Cafe for people who want to be able to stay in the borough of Queens and have concerts made available to them. Be wonderful. The areas, I know a Commission member had a concern about the area south of Roosevelt Field in terms of the active play area and was currently what they call green space, but it's actually also a parking lot. It's right next to the Bus Depot there, and that would be renovated and turned into an active space and park space. And I think the fact that eighty-three percent of the members of community boards in the surrounding areas have approved this and voted for it, all of the community boards in the surrounding areas, including community boards three and four, which were in my district when I was a city council member there, have supported this. And I think you can tell also from the testimony today how much, how big and how important the support from all of the community organizations, most of the community organizations in the area has been for this project. I finally want to say also that the Long Island Railroad and the subway are there. There was a concern about parking. Hopefully, people will use the mass transit that's already available. There's also a bus line there that passes on Northern Boulevard. And so, you know, that I think is something that we want to continue to promote is the use of public transit, and that's part of the project. And finally, let me just say that this is not a park. It's a parking lot. And I also want to say that I trust Steve Cohen, Sully, Michael Sullivan, who's here with us today, because they're reputable community members, and I do believe that they will fulfill their promises to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Thank you for being here. Okay, Alexis Kalianidis on, on the phone, perhaps?
I do not have Alexis.
Okay. How about Christina Said?
I do not have Christina.
Bishop Taylor, you're up. I see you here in the room. Welcome. Uh, followed by Joen Diaz, Mo Chan, and a little preview here since we're moving toward the end, Brian Lee and Tammy Rose. All right, Bishop, good to see you.
Oh, good afternoon, everyone. When I prepared this speech, I was prepared to say good morning, but here we are. So everyone has eloquently described the benefits of this project. I don't want to re-thread that needle. But I want to say, I want to talk about three yeses. Number one, yes to the elimination of the concrete jungle that has dogged our community for almost fifty-five years. Yes to the great union jobs, twenty-three thousand of them, and six thousand permanent jobs that will be careers. And finally, yes to investing in a part of Queens that has been underserved and overlooked for far too long. Need I say anymore? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, Joen Diaz?
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, my name is Joen Diaz. I am the Assistant Director of Youth Recovery Services at Elm Core Youth and Adult Activities, the oldest Black-founded and Black-led agency. Uh, thank you for the Commission for allowing me to speak on behalf of this project, and I want to say that we strongly support this project. Elm Core will be sixty years this year, and this history should attest to its ability to address the needs of Queens residents. Elm Core has been administering programs and services that continue to have tremendous impact on our population and the communities in which we serve, including youth, young people, families, people in recovery, immigrants, returning citizens, and older adults. It is critically important that Elm Core utilizes capacity to be a leader and advocate for the Queens communities, especially for our Black and Brown people. The fact that the leaders of this project have reached out to us and local communities to determine what our community needs and wants speaks volumes to the commitment that they are willing to provide us as leaders in the community and to the individuals living in and around the project areas. So what do the communities want? Jobs and entertainment. Those are the two main ones. And allow me a minute to expand on us. Elm Core operates the first and only youth recovery clubhouse in Queens, and the space is housed in a safe, youth-friendly spaces and supportive space. It features a number of supportive programs for youth, including youth in recovery and prevention skills development. Now, why would an organization like this support this project? Because it aligns with our mission that strives towards de-stigmatizing addiction and problem gambling within our community. Metropolitan Park believes that gaming should be a planned and budgeted entertainment option and that customers should never be encouraged to gamble beyond their means. They aim to reduce the risk of problem gambling by encouraging healthy, balanced, and recreational play and directing those who have concerns with their own or someone else's gambling behavior to available resources. Elm Core has partnered with numerous organizations and through its own Council for Airport Opportunities and Neighborhood Housing Services of Queens to address outreach, employability, job placement for neighboring communities. Of the multi-billion dollar redevelopment of LaGuardia Airport, the mission-aligned partnership was created to ensure local residents are informed of and have access to newly created job opportunities. The Metropolitan Park Project will provide thousands of union jobs that prioritizes local hiring. At Elm Core, we like to say that we are people for the people, and this project is reflective of our mission and consistently center the needs of our, of the people we serve. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Okay, Mo Chan? Mr. Chan, welcome. And before you start, let me just make my public service announcement as we're getting to, uh, close to the end of the hearing, that if there are those who are interested in being heard on this subject and have not yet signed up, now would be a good time to do it.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Uh, thank you all the Commissioners. My name is Mo Chan again. I'm a Queens lifelong resident, and I'm a community advocate. I serve on C B four, Community Board Four, and which is one of the community boards that Danny Drum mentioned, and I used to work with Danny as a part of my community, being an advocate for Burmese community, Burmese American community, that is. And so, uh, let's cut to the chase. You have all the data ahead of you, in front of you. I don't want to, I don't need to go into those data. However, those data is very important only because in back in two thousand twenty-one, um, with, and together with Queens Chamber, Tom Gretch, who was one of the speakers, um, I basically went on to show Congresswoman Grace Mang around town. It was at the, towards the end of COVID because she wanted to know what was going on exactly. And I was the guy to show her around town to see how we were suffering in, in terms of business, small businesses and the community. And as you know, Elmhurst and surrounding area was the hardest hit in the country of this COVID. And that had domino effect on many level, especially in including all the small businesses. Um, and so that was one of the reasons I was And so, that was one of the reasons I was showing her around, to see how we were suffering. And so, now that Metropolitan Park project has come to, you know, not fruition, but rather to take place, I'm asking for your yes votes, only because this is a light. And this is not just a light, it's a big light, showing us how we can work together into the future and not only, you know, to enjoy all the entertainment, as well as the park, but also supporting small businesses. Because one of their, you know, goals and object, I would say objectives, is to bring in small businesses from the community to be a part of their, you know, foothold, which is a fantastic idea. You know, this is something that we all wanted. And in addition to that, two other things that I would like to highlight. One is basically talking about environmental issues. And now that we have, New York City has, you know, recently started promoting our ferries as a part of the public transportation, that ferry could be extended to the bay right next door to the City Field, which is also another fantastic idea. And lastly, thank you. Lastly, I'm gonna go quick. Lastly, it's the, what do you call it, $163 million that is going to be supporting our communities. Thank you so much. I look forward to your yes votes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next up, Tammy Rose? I'm sorry. Brian Lee's next. Brian Lee, is Brian Lee on Zoom?
Hi. Thank you to the-
Is that you, Mr. Lee?
Yeah. Thank you to the Commission for having me again. My name is Brian Lee, born and residing in Queens.
Hold on one second.
Yep.
It's Brian Lee.
Mr. Lee, did you, oh, did you say you were here earlier?
No, it was for another.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you were coming back to us. We just want to make sure you're not coming for the second time. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
It's the second hearing. So yeah, I'm residing in Queens, and I've been running a vocational trade school in Manhattan for over 30 years. We're currently graduating hundreds of skilled workers who need jobs. And I know a ton of previous testimonies highlighted this, but I mean, that just shows how much gravity employment really is pulling right now. This is why I'm voicing my support for Metropolitan Park. A majority of the students that graduate from my school happen to be legal immigrants, and we require that all our students to be high school graduates at a minimum. So as you can see, we're graduating trade-educated, highly-skilled citizens. The jobs and careers that Metropolitan Park is creating will be huge for schools, private like mine, and public schools locally and in the entire whole city. They really need these opportunities, and we can't afford to pass this up. That's the ultimate reason for my support, and I look forward to Metropolitan Park being built and for us to reap all of its benefits. Let's please get this done. A shout out to Sully and his team, and thank you to the Commission again for giving me this opportunity. Have a great rest of your day.
Great. Thank you very much, and welcome back. Okay. Now Tammy Rose. Ms. Rose, welcome. And again, if you have not yet signed up and wish to be heard, please do.
Hello, my name is Tammy Rose. I live in Jackson Heights. I'm a mom, an early childhood educator, a small business owner, and a veteran, and a lover of my Queens community and those who live here and make it wonderful. I am here today to express my strong support for Metropolitan Park. In full transparency, my company, Little Friends, has provided and may in the future provide Queens future consulting services with respect to the design of the onsite childcare facility to be located in the Metropolitan Park site. The childcare facility is what I am here fighting for. When I first heard about this project, to be honest, I was very ambivalent. But after attending the First Town Hall and hearing about the 24,000 union jobs, my first thought was, who's taking care of the children? My second thought was, how could I not support this when there are so many jobs that could be offered, not only to our local residents, but also to our veterans who desperately need those jobs as well? After, after having multiple conversations with the team, I knew this project is exactly what we needed in Queens, and especially in my community. To be, to be able to offer childcare to the workers of this project, not only early childhood, but also after-school services, which include sports, music, wraparound schedule to accommodate the working schedule of the parents, this will be transformative in Queens. How awesome is it that it's in my neighborhood? No one else is doing this, and it would be such an asset, not only to families, but also to the children. Childcare is one of the most positive community benefits of this project, which includes a new public park for the children to play, an improved train station for the families to access, and local hiring that would employ the members of our community. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. And again, I want to express my strong support for Metropolitan Park, where we have the opportunity to put Queens first, where our kids will thank us for generations to come.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Karen Wong, you're in the room? Hello. Followed by Carolina Bustamante and Eduardo Valentin.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello, good afternoon.
Thank you for offering me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Karen Wang, and I'm here on behalf of Hamilton Medicine House to support the Metropolitan Park project. This exciting project will bring a year-round entertainment, dining, green space, and public transportation improvement, creating a place that all of Queens, New York City, can be powered off. The Metropolitan Park project is more than just a development. It is about creating jobs and boosting our local economy. It is expected to create 23,000 union jobs during the construction and 7,000 permanent union jobs once it's finished, jobs that our community very need. I work as a program director at Hamilton Medicine House, one of New York City's leading behavioral health clinics serving the Asian American community. And I am a credential alcoholism, substance abuse, and problem gambling counselor. Since 1983, we, we have operated an outpatient behavioral health clinic and a supportive housing at Corona Queens, as well as a substance abuse disorder and problem gambling clinic on Lower East Side, the first and only one of its kind in New York City and also New York State. We serve the community across with 11 Asian language and dialects. We have grateful that the way Metropolitan Park has engaged our organization and other local shareholders through numerous listening sessions, they have shown a sincere commitment to understand what the community wants and needs to drive there. Through this project, we see a real chance to expand our clinic reach and deepen our impact. The development will allow us to create an even stronger support network for our community member who desperately need affordable, accessible mental health service, connecting them to the resource that they need and deserve. For these reasons, job creation, economy growth, and community involvement, and enhanced social service, we fully support of the Metropolitan project and encourage you to approve it. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Let me call up Carolina Bustamante and then Eduardo Valentin. And that's gonna, at least for the moment, looks like that will be it for the day. Welcome.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity. My name is Carolina Bustamante. I am from the heart of Corona, Queens, a neighborhood where shootings, robbery, sexual assaults, and many other crimes are sadly a reality. But I'm also, I am workforce organization Korean American Family Service Center. We advocate for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. Our organization is strongly support Metropolitan Park plan because it was created by, it was created by having so many of us at the table from day one. They asked for our vision, for the space, and implemented many of our ideas in that design. We want to ensure that our clients and members of, members of our community benefit from the job and the business opportunities that come with this project. We have signed a MOU and will continue working with Sally and his team to create programs for workforce, workforce development, and gambling, gambling addiction prevention. That being said, the arrival of Metropolitan Park in our community is a much-needed change. I am confident that its presence will positively impact many lives and offer a brighter future for our residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Do we have Eduardo Valentin? Okay. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for hearing us. I'm patiently last, but hopefully not least. My name is Eduardo Valentin, and I'm in complete support of the Metropolitan Park project. I live and own two businesses in Jackson Heights for over 35 years. One of my businesses, called Friends Tavern, won the Queens Historical Society plaque for being a place of historical significance because we always believe that we, that a smart businessman will give back to the community. I mention this because being a small business and having received that plaque and seeing how big this project is and how much more they can do, we definitely have to cheer them on. I get about 200 applicants every time I put a job opening in one of the papers or in one of the classified ads. The crazy thing is that I get a lot of college grads who are actually looking to work nine times so that they can have their family members take care of their children so that they don't have to pay child, anybody to take care of their children. They don't have to pay for babysitting. And because this is something, they almost make as much as a salary as they have to pay out for this. The good thing about this project is that they're creating 6,000 permanent jobs, and I hear people knocking down the casino. But we have to understand that this casino will also be creating thousands of jobs that a lot of them don't require a college diploma. And the icing on the cake is that they are willing to provide childcare to mothers and struggling parents. If you see the news, you hear how bad Roosevelt Avenue has become. I have businesses there, so I know. I'm there fighting for a better Roosevelt Avenue, for a Jackson, for a better Jackson Heights. And it's funny how it's become almost a cancer where this cancer is growing. This Metropolitan Park project is gonna renew a train station that's so horrible for many people when they come to the U.S. Open, when they come to the new stadium that's being built for the soccer stadium, when they come to a Mets game. It's hard for them to see that. And they judge Queens, they judge all our neighborhoods by what they see at that station. So what they are doing here by creating a beautiful park, creating beautiful green space, what they are doing with creating this brand-new train station, they're helping anyone who comes from other parts of the city or other parts of the world to see Queens, to see Jackson Heights in a new light. We want, we hear people, when we travel, we hear so much people talking about Gantry Park and Domino Park. Metropolitan Park can be even bigger, especially with our World's Fair history. I am LGBTQ Latino small business owner, and they cared, they cared enough to ask me for my thoughts and recommendations, and they included them in their vision. And I'm one of many. No one has ever united so many different people, listened to our concerns, and created something incredible for our neighborhood. With great power comes great responsibility. Mr. Cohen, Sully, and his team know this and have already proven to be a community partner and have already been working closely with us without any prejudice. Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you very much. And I think unless there's anybody else who wishes to be heard right now, Mr. Valentin, you are going to be last, certainly not least. We do appreciate your patience and your testimony. And I am going to just take a moment to thank everybody for the time and energy that they brought to today. We know there's lots of feelings on the subject, but very much appreciate your patience and your time today. And Madam Secretary, I am inclined here to close the hearing on calendars 19 and 20, if now is the time to do so, and I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Chair. We would like to do one more attempt for Matthew Robert Walsh, just to see if he would like to speak. Give that a minute.
Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh, you there? Going once, going twice? Okay. I think we have given Mr. Walsh a fair shake here, so let's, let's move on. And of course, I know you're about to give some instructions about what somebody can do if they either missed the hearing today or wish to be heard at a later date.
Before we close the record, before we close the hearing, rather, the record will remain open through 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, January 21st, 2025, to receive written comments on the DEIS. And Chair, there is no other business before the Commission for the public meeting, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who were unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the NYC Engage portal, through DCP's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st floor, New York, New York, 10271. The time now is 2:47.
Wonderful. And we are adjourned. Thank you all again.